Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 18th, 2024 Woodland Park City Council Meeting. Suzanne, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Case.
Here.
Mayor Proctem Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Gier.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you, everyone. We're on item three ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, and IMA is a proclamation of the city of Woodland Park declaring July Parks and Recreation Month, and we have a presentation from syndicating our Parks and Rec Director. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Case and councilmembers. I appreciate the opportunity to bring to you the acknowledgement of National Parks and Recreation Month and to introduce some of our Parks and Rec team here to you tonight. In honor of Parks and Recreation Month, our staff has developed a free community scavenger hunt and activity list that incorporates adventure and fun in all of our parks and trails. Participants just need to share a photo of themselves participating in the scavenger hunt or the activities, and their name is entered into a drawing, and we have awesome prizes. We'll be doing our drawing on August 1st, but we have two mountain bikes. We have a birthday party rental for free at the Aquatic Center. We have a 10 punch punch card for free. We have a 50% off discount for any UPCC or the Cultural Center rental. And then we also have a discount for Park and Rec program, and of course, Woodland Park swag that we'll be giving away on August 1st. So encourage your fans, your family, yourselves, if you're interested in a mountain bike or anything like that to participate. It's a lot of fun. And as you can see, Maria, who is our program coordinator, has put this presentation together for you all to see what we've been doing for our community since around October last year. A lot of fun events, a lot of new programming that we have going on. So I hope you're enjoying this before we get into the proclamation. I also wanted to recognize that tomorrow is Parks and Recreation Professionals Day. And I want to mention all of our Park and Rec professionals, our staff that we have, our lifeguards, I can't name them all by name because there's like 30 of them, our swim instructors, our custodial staff, our site supervisors, our program coordinators, and our facility managers, along with all of our volunteers, make these programs and events happen for our community. The staff that we have is a hardworking, dynamic team, providing quality facilities, programs, and events for all to enjoy. I would like the staff to join me up here at the podium, and I would like them to take just a couple of minutes to introduce themselves to you, tell you their name, their position, how long they've been with the city, and what excites them the most about their position. And you guys get to choose who comes first.
Hi, I'm Mary Moody. I'm the sports coordinator. I've been here just a little over a year. Excited about some new programs starting. We've got some flag football starting this year. Just got done with girls softball, which was new this year. I'm also really excited about the fact that we're starting to put some emphasis on our trail systems. So that's what I'm excited about.
Hello, I'm Maria Navratna, and I'm program coordinator. And I've been here for about nine months, causing trouble. And I've been most excited about the cabin at the Centennial Trailhead, which we've been able to do lovely art camps in, and you can see a lot of perfect timing. And also, the scavenger hunt has turned out to be really fun because I've been getting photos from moms and dads that have been taking pictures of their kids doing some of the activities. So I love connecting with young parents of young children.
Hi, I'm Louis Lang. I'm the Assistant Aquatic Manager over at the WAC. I've been here a year now, and what I'm really excited about my job is we recently, with Brady's help, redid our swim lesson curriculum. And to see the kids that are advancing and how much better the programming is being for our community members and seeing the instructors get to be successful has been really exciting.
And I get to follow up. I'm Brady Warner. I am the manager of the Woodland Aquatic Center, going on my fourth year now. And I say what I'm most excited about is just the future, what team we put together, everything that we have in place, Avenger coming online. We have a lot of opportunities for some really, really interesting things to bring to the community over the next little bit.
And then just finally, I just wanted to thank everyone who selflessly delivers high-quality experiences and opportunities for our community. Without you, we wouldn't be enjoying the outdoors or any programming that our community enjoys. So it's not just Parks and Recreation, but it's all of our partners throughout our area and everything that they offer. So thank you very much. Thank you for your support of Parks and Recreation. And Kelly, thank you for the proclamation this evening.
You're very welcome. I'll read it for you all now. Proclamation of July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Woodland Park. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illness such as depression, attention deficit disorder, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking, trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas park and recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, environmental arts and culture education, and critical to child development, are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, and attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Woodland Park recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor, the city council, and city council that July is recognized as Mayor as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Woodland Park, Teller County. Okay.
Yay.
Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
I'm wondering, Mayor, would I be able to get a picture of Cindy and Steph with the proclamation with you?
Please.
Thank you.
I'll take it from here, I'll see.
Thank you.
All right, item four, additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. Suzanne, anything?
No, ma'am.
Hey, thank you. Item five is the consent calendar. Counsel, we have three items. Number A is approval of the June 27th, 2024 meeting minutes. B is approval of the May 2024 Statement of Expenditures. And C is approval of the June 2024 Statement of Expenditures. Do you have any questions or any of them you'd like to take separately?
Nope. And I make a motion to approve the consent calendar, all items as is.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion, counsel? Suzanne?
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gier?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Item six is public comment on items not on the agenda. Suzanne, do we have folks?
We do, Mayor. I'm just looking, Mike, I'm not clear on what item you want to speak to. Okay, so let's have you come. You were my first person to sign up. We'll have you come talk about the Fourth of July, and I'll put you down on the other item as a speaker. Thank you.
Mike, if you'd just give us your town and your name and town of residence, please.
Mike Demuth, I live in Florissant.
Thank you.
Well, this time I don't have a long three-minute speech for you guys. I wanted to thank everybody up here for your support with the Fourth of July thing. It was awesome. And if you guys weren't there, my wife and I were one of the people spearheading it in one of the nonprofits with the Divide Mountain Explorers. We did the Dunk Tank. And speaking of the Dunk Tank, we had two of these folks up here, Mr. George Jones and Terry Baldwin. And Terry, you were a champ because it was cold, cold, cold when you were there, and you probably got dunked 30 or 40 times. So it was awesome. You guys were fantastic. I really like the fact that a lot of us that have different political standings and don't exactly agree on everything can get together to do something as simple as build some little libraries. And so for that, I wanted to thank you guys. Some of the kids that are in our group got you guys some letters. When they were signing them, they got some sticky stuff on them. So, but, but I just wanted to say thank you, and it was a great event, and we look forward to doing a whole bunch more with the city.
Mike, thank you. Thank you, Mike. Yep. That was a fantastic event. That was absolutely fantastic. And Mike told me, he said, I think you did 10 minutes in the Dunk Tank, and you said that was too much. Terry and I did 20, and I was like, I felt like I was getting waterboarded. Well, when I was there, it was a little warmer. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but Terry, you guys have to clean water.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
The next speaker is Jerry Penland.
Good evening, Jerry. If you could share your name and city of residence, please.
Jerry Penland, Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Water availability is key to Woodland Park's future. Your campaign messages included water availability, or water sustainability, or water something as one of your major goals. Are you really water-focused? If so, I'm sure you know that within five years, we will have right here inside our city a new large four-story building, a 340,000-square-foot student activity center with a 1,000-seat cafeteria. And an even larger new building, a 440,000-square-foot student activities athletic center with an Olympic-sized pool. That's almost the size of eight football fields. Plus six more large buildings, luxury student dorms. Within 10 years, the city will have a new performing arts center building. And within 10 years, the city will have a new very large 350-room hotel to include a large conference center. That's almost six times the 60 rooms at the Country Lodge. Closest of all of that will be new duplexes, quadplexes, and single-family housing. Does your vision for the future of our city include all of these new buildings and the infrastructure to support them, especially all of the additional water requirements? Standing right here, I recently asked you a simple question. What will our build-out population be with supporting details? If our almost 100 vacant lots are built to the maximum density by our current zoning allowances? We still don't have that number. How can you expect us to believe you're doing more than just hoping that everything developers want to build on our vacant lots, plus all the planned new construction we already know about, will fit with our future water availability? Maybe you hope this problem will simply go away, but hope is not a plan. We need a majority of you up there to meet this infrastructure challenge with more than just hope. Integrating all of this planned construction into our city deserves one or more city council working sessions with citizen input. This is not a street-level, house-by-house, water task discussion to manage our growth. This is a 30,000-feet-level look, a strategic review of how all of this can possibly work in our small city. We look forward to such a tremendously important working session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brian Paul.
Brian who? Paul. Oh, yes. Thank you. If you would give us your name and city of residence, please.
Yes, Brian Paul. My address is Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Then let's wait until we get to that item on the agenda. If that's what you want to speak to, because this is for items not on the agenda.
Yeah, I didn't know if they were voting on it already, but okay, I will wait for the
We'll call it.
Telecommunication section.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment for this evening, Mayor. Thank you, Suze. All right, item seven, unfinished business. We have none. Item eight is ordinance is on initial posting, and we have none there, and takes us to 9A, public hearings. And this is item eight, approval of ordinance 1471, series 2024, and ordinance of the city council of Woodland Park, Colorado, reducing the city sales tax by 1.09% effective January 1st, 2025. And this item is continued from the March 7th, 2024 city council meeting. And Erin, if you'd start us off, please.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so I just wanted to provide a little background information before I get into the actual recommendations or options that we have as a city here. So the city council instructed staff to research accounting and oversight options to increase the understandability and accountability for the 1.09 sales tax. And so my objective here is to provide clear examples as a model that can be used and to also receive direction for potentially a new IGA. So when I started this process, I said I wanted to establish a few things. I wanted to look at what is the school district currently doing as far as accounting goes for the 1.09 sales tax? And then I wanted to look at what are the options? How would you account for a trust fund? How would you account for an endowment? How would you account at the city level for a 410 fund and enterprise fund? So I looked at quite a few things, and then I also looked at what are the other cities that have a sales tax for the school districts? What are they doing? So I had kind of a big pool of things that I could narrow down to. So I picked three options that I could share with you all. So first, what is the school district currently doing that's similar to the way that the city does accounting? So I looked at the lodging tax fund. And when you look at the lodging tax fund, it's very similar to the way that the school district is accounting for their sales tax. They put all of the revenues into the fund, and then they show amounts based on various criteria. So in our lodging tax fund, we have parks, labor, and the visitor center, and some other items. For the school district, they have salaries, and they have capital projects, and they have operating expenditures. In the lodging tax fund, there is no detail. Everything that goes into this fund gets transferred out to another fund to pay for it. So there's zero detail in our balances. If you look at the lodging tax fund, there's no backup. If you wanted a receipt for something, you can't get it because all of the detail is going to be in that other fund where the money's transferred. And so that's kind of the issue that a lot of people are running into with the current accounting is there's no backup being able to be provided. So how can we address that? If we look at option one, the way that the city accounts for our 410 fund, which is the streets fund, in this fund, it looks on paper very similar to our lodging tax fund. It has the revenues and it has the expenditures. The difference is that in the 410 fund, all of the detail for every expenditure is laid out in the fund. If I click into our accounting module, and I look at any, if I want to look at street paving improvements, I can see every single street paving expenditure that we've had. I can see every single street repair. And if somebody asks for the backup, I can pull it right from here. There's no question. And it's very transparent because I say we spent $2 million out of street paving improvements. I can show you a ledger of every single dollar that we spent, what it was spent on, and I can pull the backup and receipt for each item. So the 410 fund provides a tremendous level of understandability and accountability because of the way that it's set up. So my number one option, and the cleanest way, I think, to ask the school board to account for the funds would be the same way that we do the 410 fund. It provides line item detail right in the fund level. There's no questions. You can see everything right there. For option two, I said, okay, if this was an endowment or a trust fund that the school had, or it was a grant, how would that process work? It would be very similar to what we do in option one with the way that we line item detail everything, except when you have a grant or you have a trust fund, a lot of times you have to ask for reimbursement. So you have to incur the expenditure, or you have to show them what you're going to spend, and then you have to ask for it to be reimbursed. So this would be the second option, I would say, is provide the accounting that we're showing in option one, but the city would hold the funds, and a monthly reimbursement invoice would be submitted by the school district to the city, and then the city would remit payment based on that information. So if you look at the backup I provided for you, you can see the way the city, you just approved the statement of expenditures. I would assume that something similar would be provided. There would be a register of the expenditures that are being asked to be reimbursed, and there would be a front sheet showing, you know, we spent this much on salaries, we spent this much on operating expenditures, and then the reimbursement would be issued. So this would be the second option. This would be very similar to the way that a trust fund or a grant would operate. And then we have option three. This is an example from the city of Steamboat Springs. They have a very involved process when they pass their school tax ordinance. They actually established a fund to oversee and administer the administration distribution of the 1.09% sales tax. They require them to be a good standing as a Section 501(c)(3) organization. They require city oversight of their board and decision-making in who's elected onto their boards for the fund, not for the school district, not for the school board. The city would remit the funds, less the administrative fee to the fund on a monthly basis. And then the fund would determine what the available uses are and how that reimbursement process would look. So this would put all of the control onto a separate fund to determine how it's reported, how it's reimbursed. This option would incur additional fees and costs because they're going to have to set up a 501(c)(3). They're going to have to do annual reporting. You're going to have to set up a board. It's going to take time. It's going to take administration. So that's one of the big drawbacks to this method is that it would take a lot of additional oversight. Yeah, so those are the three options I've come up with here for you all to consider. Obviously, it's up to you. You can do a hybrid of these. You can come up with anything that you would like to consider, but these are the three that I thought made the most sense. Earlier this week, we did have a meeting, myself and the mayor, and we spoke with the school board president, Mick Bates, to kind of lay out what we're thinking to get an idea of if that would work. And I think we had a very good dialogue and a great start to this discussion. All right, and then I'll turn it over to the mayor. I think she had a few comments on this.
Thank you, Erin. Yes, we did. We had a very productive meeting with Mick, who I see is with us in the audience. And what we really focused on, and after the presentation, Erin has provided you with a larger copy of the the two different funds, the lodging tax fund, Street Capital Improvement Fund, and then a detail of the ledger of the payment register out of that fund. So we shared this information with Mick, and Cassie was also in attendance. She's the vice chair of the school board. And we had a great conversation and see that there's some opportunity here to really do a great job and be responsive, not only to the citizens and the taxpayers for the 1% sales tax, but also to the constituents of the board, the school board. So with that, I, with my background and what I see as being the less cumbersome and probably the most informative, would be the option one to account for it, similar to the way we account for our 1% sales tax, because that tax was approved by the voters, like the school tax. And it also is for a very specific use, according to the question that was presented to the voters, like the 1.09 tax was for the school district. So I think that this is a good solution. The initial, and I'll let Mick speak to their reaction to that, but what I took away from it, and Erin did as well, and Suze was with us as well, is that it seems to be palatable and something that could occur. And so, counsel, if you would like to make comments, I'd like to hear from you and then give Mick the opportunity to address the council and the public with regards to this as well. Yes?
With either way that it goes, will there be a sunset clause put into it?
No. I think that, and I'll ask the city attorney, but I think that that would require the people, a vote of the people, the sunset that, or an ordinance by the council to create a sunset, but.
You would need to go to back of the people to do that.
So I think that that is something, ever since this took place, this election took place, that I was disappointed that we didn't see a sunset in this, in this sales tax. But that's something that can be addressed. I think, can we solve this dilemma and then talk about other things down the road?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may. Yeah, so I agree with you. I think option one, that's kind of what I've been looking at all along, that kind of level of detail and the less heavy, onerous administration on it, right? So, yeah, I'm good with that.
Yes, Jeff.
So I'll work backwards. I think option three is the least tenable of the options presented. You know, originally, I really liked that idea, but it's cumbersome. It requires, you know, the school board to be appointing people, requires us to be appointing people, just seems not worth, the juice isn't worth the squeeze on that one. I tend to prefer option two, and I don't necessarily have a problem with option one, but I think option two kind of gives that additional level of detail that option one does not. So I'm certainly more in the camp of option two than option one.
And who do you see paying the cost of administering that?
So Erin, option two would largely be run by your staff. Is that an accurate statement?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a cost associated to that for you?
There will be additional time required, but I don't think upfront we would ask for additional funding. I think we would wait and see how much additional work it actually entails.
So in other words, there might not be an additional cost to do option two?
There definitely would be additional costs, but it's, for us to put a dollar amount out upfront would be very difficult.
Okay, so you would basically be looking at the next revision of the IGA to adjust the passing fee.
Yeah, if there was a substantial change.
Okay, understood. All right. Thank you.
Carol, were you wanting to weigh in?
Yes, I like Jeff's approach there. I think option three is not appropriate for our community. It may have worked if that was part of the original ballot question, and we had established that kind of protocol upfront, but we did not. What we failed to do in 2016 when the city council, and I will take the responsibility for that in some part, is that we did not provide very good reporting parameters for responsibility for that in some part is that we did not provide very good reporting parameters for the school district in, in telling us or providing us accountability on, on how the tax was spent after it was dispersed. My preference again would be option one as well. Option two, I think, would unfortunately put the city in the position of arbitrating disputes about a submitted invoice for reimbursement. That's not our role at all. I think our, our basic problem statement is that we're, we're just looking for a better means of accounting for a sales tax that we do have responsibility to manage, at least in the fact that we listen to our constituents who voted for that tax and those, those constituents want to know how it's spent. We're, we're not giving a good regimen to the school district and, and helping them to make that kind of reporting. So if option one were viable and something that we could amend our most recently amended IGA, I, I would, I would certainly support option one. I have a couple of questions, though. When funds are collected from any source that are then deposited into the general fund of the city or the school district or the county, those generally become fungible monies. How would this approach in option one allow us to help the school district segregate that money and make sure it's not spent anywhere else? How does that work?
The school district would be the ones who have to set it up similar to the four ten fund on their end. Our, our accounting wouldn't change. We would still receive the money, put it in suspense and then send it out to them each month. On their end, they would have to account for it in this format.
But the city finance department would maintain the ledger, if that's what you want to call it. Or not, the, the school district would, but we would ask that they account through it, through that ledger process, the same as our four ten fund. And right now we have an IGA that increased the pass-through fee to the school district of 1%. Do you think that that is still appropriate for now?
Yes.
And if we were to amend the IGA within the next few weeks, how would that come back to city council? Would we have to have a work session to discuss it? Or would it just be a back and forth between attorneys, which I'm sure Jeff is not looking forward to, but.
What, what Jeff and I had discussed was that Jeff and I would work together with the school board administration. I would also probably recommend at least one or two council members and one or two school board members to get together in those discussions so that we can hash out and agree exactly on what is to be expected and then to bring that back to the council for approval.
And I think our discussions here tonight would be indication to the community that there's no intention of the city council to repeal this tax. There is an ordinance in place that we do have to consider tonight because we put it on, on, on our agenda. It, it may be that we'll hold on to it for some, some specified date within the next four weeks. But this is, this is, I hope, indicative of the fact that there's no intent to repeal this tax. I appreciate all of the input we received from the community for those that are in favor of the tax, and I think that is the majority of the folks in this room. But almost to a person that has corresponded with us via email, they've all said they just want to ensure that there's accountability of those funds. It's not an unreasonable request. I wish in 2016, we'd been a little more precise when we initiated the first IGA, but we were not. But now we have a question of where and how is that money being spent? That is the only aspect of the school district that we have any authority over. And the rest of the school district's budget is, is really under the purview of the, the board of directors. And it is not our intent to interfere with that process. But we have a responsibility to our constituents and the voters of 2016 to make sure that that money is accounted for and accounted for in detail, not broad brush, 30 feet or 30,000 feet of view of the, how the money is spent. So my recommendation is that we adopt option one and, and allow the staff to work on an amendment to the IGA.
Thank you, Carol. Carrie?
Yes, I do. So Erin, the, the school board would be responsible for setting up a separate account. And so a person who looked at the accounting would see the receipt of the money for the month. Let's say $300,000 for a month. And it should be then deposited, we should be able to see a deposit into this separate account. Right? And the accounting will be such that anybody that does any kind of requests and wants to see it, it will be transparent enough to see where the money went.
Yes, it would be a separate fund that would have a number of accounts underneath it. So they would have the revenue accounts of the sales tax going in. And they would have expenditure accounts of all the line items that they're expending out.
Is anybody in favor of option number three, or can we set that one aside?
I think we can set three aside.
And I think I would not like number two, option two, either for the same reason. And I don't want your staff to be inundated with all of that work.
Yep, our attorney would like to share something.
I just wanted to correct something about my response to a council member's map. I was mistaken. When he asked me whether a, a sunset provision requires us to return to the voters, it does not. Indeed, the ordinance that you have, you know, is a sunset. It's a, a date where the ordinance goes away in the future. And that's absolutely within your authority, just as within your authority to immediately, you know, repeal it tonight if, if it was properly noticed.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Counsel?
I have some more thoughts.
Audience is asking, you speak into your mic, so you're having a hard time hearing.
I thought mine was echoing, so I stepped back.
Thank you. Do you have anything else?
I do, but I'm going to wait and let everybody else talk.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify if I, I'm understanding and maybe for the public. So if we set, if the school board sets it up like our four ten fund, then they'll have the expenditures, which will be line item receipts, correct? And anybody can cor request it.
Correct. That would be the intention.
That's the intent, right? Just making sure that I'm on the same, same page. So I've, I, I can't say anything else that the other people haven't said. It's all the same stuff. So yeah, option one at this point seems to make the most sense. For me. Thank you. Just to, to say a little bit more about what you were identifying as far as expenditures, those expenditure line items are descriptive. So that they, they reflect what the expenditures look like, what they, like salaries and benefits and payroll taxes or capital expenditure. And then those invoices and billings and such would be paid out of that line. And then a history of that line item can be provided off the accounting system. That's how ours works. And it makes it really quite simple for staff to keep track of things that are, are labeled for specific.
Erin, do you have those backup slides that can be shown on the screen? The, the, what I'm looking at specifically is the second page of a Street Capital Improvement ledger.
This one or?
No, under option one, the backup for option one. Yeah. Well, that's, that's a, a much more broad explanation of how our street fund is managed. But then the next page is the more detailed. No, that is, that is, yeah, line item detail is available in the fund. So that's what it looks like. And as I think everyone can recognize, that is not a pie chart, so.
And in our, in our financial system, if you click on, let's say, street paving improvements, if you click on it, it will show you by month, all the transactions that we had. And then you can click on the transaction and actually see the, the detail of it. And it would say payment to contractor X, or it would say street improvement to, you know, wha- whatever vendor it is that we paid. So that, that's the kind of detail that you can get when you have it accounted for this way.
Mayor Case, I, I'm really interested in hearing from Mick, but another question I had is if there were a core request to the city to see any part of this ledger, would we be able to respond to it or would the school district respond to it or, or either one?
On the.
If we were to use.
We would have no detail.
Okay, so that would still have to be managed by the school district. Okay.
But easier, which is why I liked option two.
But easier to, to do quarter, answer core requests, right?
Yes.
There's no digging around. It's just.
It was, it would be right there.
Right.
In the GL.
And it also provides no off-book record keeping. For in general fund, when I was the finance director, I used to keep an off-books spreadsheet for capital projects. So that if there were several funding sources in the general fund for capital projects, then we would be able to identify what those expenses were. If this type of accounting for this special type of revenue alleviates the need for that. I'll ask one more quick question. So how detailed do they have to be in the expenditures? I mean, because like we have police officer two gets this much salary this month. So would they do the same with teacher A gets this? That's, or that's the pay structure, our pay grade structures? Well, but it shows up in our expenditures, right, that we've paid out our salary. It just says who, so you don't know who, you don't know who the actual police officer is getting the paycheck, but it, it structures and shows us our salaries per month, right? So would they do the same as far as administrative salary, staff salary, I mean, teacher salary would?
I, I believe that would be direction from counsel.
Okay.
As to what level inherently in the fund accounting, it, it should be set up somewhat to that level of detail. But I couldn't say because without setting up the system ourselves, we can't, we can't determine that.
Okay. Anything else, counsel?
Well, I just want, will there be, will, will we put a process in place by which we can check in to make sure that it's being done in a way that the public can access? Or no?
Again, I would, I would defer to counsel.
Because, because what I'm thinking is once a year sort of reporting is a long time for a lot of stuff to get all cattywacked, all this over in the wrong place.
Wouldn't that be something we could address in the IGA?
Well, certainly our, our four ten fund is available on a monthly basis and I, that would be my guidance to staff and, and a discussion that we would have with the, the BOE directors is that would accessible by, by the month. Whatever our reporting requirements are of the city, I, I would assume would be the same in this type of an accounting.
Accessible via core requests or accessible via another method?
I, I would certainly hope it'd be accessible at the same way we would be able to provide it. I mean, we, we get a monthly report from the city manager on all expenses. And I would assume it would be the same for this particular account, or it would be of no use. You know, you know, as, as Councilman Baldwin's already said, you know, we can't. Part of our challenge has been, I'm not going to say it's a problem, but a challenge in accountability is that an annual reporting is possibly not the most satisfactory means of reporting. So accessible on a monthly basis or on, or, you know, at, at any time someone wanted to pull that up. But I would assume that the accounting would occur on a, a twelve, a thirty day cycle or whatever it may be. But I would think that that should be part of our instruction to the staff and whoever's going to work on it on the school district side.
So basically part of the IGA then?
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, month or annually just ain't going to cut it. That's the whole problem.
All right. Mayor?
Mick, would you, yes. I didn't, I don't, you went through everyone. I don't think you got.
I spoke.
He spoke first. Okay, what was your option?
Oh, I, you're one.
Okay, that's what I meant. Everyone said their option. I didn't hear his option.
Did everybody else say what I was going to say?
Okay.
They're just blind.
Good evening, Mick. Thank you for joining us this.
Thank you for the time. I totally agree with the nature of our meeting last Tuesday. Everyone came in there with a spirit of solving this issue and some ideas were presented. We were given copies of some of what you were seeing up there. So that was productive, but one of my concerns was certainly we could look at adding another layer to this process. But we all need to step back and understand that we did not write the new criteria for the IGA. That was done by the city and the school board signed off on that without requiring any changes to that IGA. And, you know, I was, I was doing well with this until we start talking about a monthly accounting of that. And that's not the na- that's not the nature of that IGA. It's an annual report at the end of the school year. And I mean, where are we going to go with adjustments to this? If we're going to look at potentially putting another layer in there of accountability, we would certainly be open to that. I mean, I want to remind everyone that we've shown a spirit of cooperation through this process. And, you know, the, I'll talk about the ordinance in just a moment. But I think we have shown goodwill in solving this issue. But I don't want to turn this into something that was never intended to be. And the voters said an annual reporting. Could we possibly figure, work something else out? I suppose we could, but you know what? Our administration is busy as I'm sure yours is. And if we start adding monthly reporting in there, that is substantial. And if you look back at previous responses to the IGA, they were, they were provided in pie charts historically. And you have other people within the county that provide pie charts. The only thing that was in the IGA that differed was the fact that you wanted separate accounting for the charter school versus the rest of the district. And I feel like we met that criteria of the new IGA. No? I mean, that was the only thing we spelled out that differed.
And, and no, it was, it was intended to make sure that the charter school was included in the distribution. It was a clause to specifically address the charter school and that they would have the same reporting requirement that the, the school, the overall school district did. That was the only, that was truly the only address of the charter school option or the charter school issue. But I, I would have a question though for you. Do you have a finance officer right now in the district?
We, we do not. And as I shared in the meeting last Tuesday, we are in the, in the process. We have some good candidates, but that has not been completed yet. So what I would have eventually got to, thank you for bringing it up. We need a little bit of time to get a CFO in place and let them get settled in. And I also suggested that if there was a need, we could set up a, I don't know if you'd call it a work session, but a meeting, something similar to what we did last Tuesday and have our CFO here. So everyone is able to give quality responses to questions that might come up. But no, I, I've, I've got copies of everything was up there, but no one in the administration has seen them yet to even have an idea of, of what is being asked for. But we did discuss that and I think we were all able to agree that we could. I'm not talking, putting this on the back burner. There's no one that would rather put this behind us than, than me. And of course I will speak for our school board. We'd like, this has been a long process. And, you know, it has for you as well. So this wouldn't be something that I would want to drag out a long ways. But again, I want to enforce that we agreed to all of the changes proposed by the city council in the recently signed IGA. I mean, it included a significant increase in the administrative costs. I mean, we went from $4,500 to $32,500. And we were pretty accepting of that. There was a little back and forth between the attorneys, which was cordial, and we agreed to go ahead and pay the full amount. There was another $26,000 value that was discussed. So I do stand here in the spirit of finding a solution to this that will satisfy everyone. This would be, this would be part of the healing that needs to take place. This is talked about everywhere in the community. You know, we're, we're not here to throw a wrench in the works of this. We are willing to take a look at another layer, but we would have to have a CFO in place. And I did share with them, I didn't want it to get real labor intensive, but at the same time, respond to the questions and needs. But at the same time, respond to the questions and needs that, that you folks have pre- presented. And then lastly, um. As I heard from you, Ms. Harvey tonight, I've heard, heard from many of the members of city council. They say there is no intention to pull these IGA monies. And if we look back to when that ordinance was put in. It was, we had a work session scheduled with city council for February twenty-ninth of this year. And a week before that or thereabouts. The city council put this ordinance through. And, you know, I mean, I. I, I understand that you wanted to have another level of leverage to get this process done. But folks, again, we did come to the table, it was very cordial, those meetings, some of you were there. And if, if ev- if everyone has no intention of pulling the funds from this. Why then can we not kill that ordinance tonight? Uh, well, I see you shaking your head. It, wh- what, what leverage would that be to make sure that we? Take a look at this second layer, I would like to see a spirit of cooperation coming from the other side, is my point.
Please. If you would, please just refrain, thank you, I know it's, it's emotional, thank you.
Because I feel like at every level since that work session, we have. I feel strongly that we have come up to the plate and been very cooperative. We've done everything we said we were gonna do, we weren't trying to be smart, Alex, when we turned in those pie charts, that was what had historically been done. And I think you could find fault out for both parties. For the window of time and nothing got done because of COVID and, and some other various things, but I think we're on a new track now. And I personally and the rest of our, of our board. Think that we're on a good track that, that shows. Cooperation, so I don't think it would be. Uh, too much of an ask. To sunset or kill this ordinance because. For the purposes it was put in, we did sign an IGA, and both parties signed that. We did meet the commitment. To do that. And now it's, now there's talk of stretching this ordinance out and out and now. We've got a, we've got a school year coming up, many, you're all aware of that. And I'd like to put this ordinance behind us, and I assure you. That we will take positive action towards agreeing on this second layer of accountability. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, man. Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, um, okay. Mick, um, in the conversation that you had with staff and with the mayor, what, what option were you leaning towards of those three options?
To be honest, I was looking for the least laborious.
Hmm.
Process that could work, it was a good comparison, talking about the street tax. And, you know. For, for my part and for our administration's part, I think that is the best option.
Okay.
It's, it's the least amount of.
Yeah.
Of bookkeeping and people's time.
Right.
So yes, that, that was a fair question.
It would be the option one that, that we discussed in the meeting, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
First off, thanks for coming tonight, I really appreciate it, um. Uh, my question is really more around, how do we find the middle ground between, you know. You, you're concerned about the, the labor requirement to do a monthly reporting. Uh, versus the yearly, which is what we're currently doing. Can we find a middle ground there, um, quarterly? Um, would that be more am- amenable? I'm just trying to figure out, you know, kinda. Um, cause I'm respectful of the fact that, you know, you may have a concern there as far as the effort to do it on a monthly basis, so.
The, I mean, I would like to stick with the original ten of the IGA, which is what the voters decided on. And they selected an annual. Reporting, and you know, it's not even till after the first of the year that we have any kind. Of uh audit, auditable information, I don't think. It's appropriate to even go quarterly, I mean, I don't know what else. Could be presented, the, the information is always available on the website as we proceed through. The, through the year, so I would like to stick with the original intent. Of the IGA and do annual reporting. Wait, it, do, am I stuck on that? No, but it's not fair of me to stand here and make commitments without talking to the rest of the team.
No, that, that's understandable, I appreciate it, I.
Thank you.
Uh, like I said, I, I, I get where you're coming from, from your perspective, absolutely. Um, it, the way I kinda look at it and why um I'm concerned about, you know, a longer gap than maybe the month or the quarter. Um, is all the detail that we're talking about. Um, Aaron has referenced several times about how easy it is for us to go and get that information, he just has to make a couple of clicks. Uh, the general public, while they can make that request. Um, they, they can't do that themselves, so, so the reason why I'm asking that and trying to kinda figure out what's the best middle ground here. Is more for the general public's benefit than mine or yours or anybody else up here, so.
Well, and, and. To that point. You know, I wanna talk to our CFO and see, you know, he, chances are he'll have the same opinion. That the city manager has, but until I get an opinion from someone a- about the part that they'll be responsible for taking care of. I, I don't wanna make these commitments.
No, that, that's fair.
I did come in here stating that we are in a spirit of cooperation, and I hope that has shown since uh February.
Do you, so, do you have a, sorry, one more thing?
No, you're fine.
Do you have a timeline on your CFO hire at this point?
Well, I will, I will early next week.
Okay, understood.
You know, there, there are some uh. Um, interviews going on and, and some favorites, but I, that's the extent of what I could tell you tonight.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Carol. Uh, ma- mayor, I just wanted to, to make a correction, um, uh. Because I come from the world of acronyms and. Even when I speak with my children, I use acronyms, but the intergovernmental agreement or the IGA was the only. Uh, document that uh required an annual reporting requirement. The actual ballot question did not, the ballot question simply established the, the tax itself and the collection of the tax and how it would be used.
Okay, but then it was, when, when the IGA was created, it was included in there.
In the IGA, yes sir, but not in the ballot question.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
So. Counsel, if I could. I would like to get a consensus to give um staff and our attorney direction. On how to proceed with what I hear is option one. And. Then um. Let them coordinate with, and, and as Aaron described. Put together a team so that we can sit at the table and finalize it and not have the back and forth be, that we had last time. So I, I, I like that idea, I hope you do as well. And allow that team to um. Get with the school board and iron out what that looks like. And the language for the IGA, which I just envisioned being a small paragraph.
Yeah.
And. And the rest of the IGA would remain the same. As it is today. And if that is acceptable, I'd like to just hear consensus from you all. With regards to that issue to give staff direction, and then we can address. Item ninety-eight.
Consensus, sure, and, but I, I would like for there to be a, a time limit on it. Again, uh, we're, it's been going and going and going, so if we could get a, a new. If we could get a new IGA signed. By the beginning of.
Well, August. I would, I would make, I would say that a goal would be to bring it to the next council meeting. For approval. I don't see any sense in belaboring it on and on and on. Uh, would you agree, staff, that we can get that done? Mick, would you agree that by next council meeting, if we put that team together, we could? Uh. Consider that new IGA at our next council meeting. Which would be August first, and not belabor this forever.
For what purpose then, to have the negotiation over these other levels?
With the team. That Aaron described. And you all. Um, to kind of talk through that and see what that IGA looks like and try and get that resolved.
No, I, I want to say that I think we can do that, but I, I.
Thank you.
Wanna have an opinion of the new CFO.
Right.
Before I come and.
I understand.
Discuss it.
I.
But I also am not, I just shared with you, we're on the same page, I don't wanna drag this out either whatsoever.
All right.
But I want to give our CFO the opportunity to understand it, and then, then do have this meeting, I mean, can we set maybe for the following? Meeting?
So, it's the second meeting in August, that would be August fifteenth.
August fifteenth.
Okay.
It's, yeah, I mean, he's, he's got, the school board's gotta pull in a, a new CFO, so and, and I think. Mr. Bates is correct that i- it would be prudent of him to. Uh, get some advice from that CFO as to how this is gonna work, so. You know, I, yes, we don't want this thing to drag on, but we do have that. As a. A critical factor.
And I, and I understand that, but if this IGA doesn't get changed and signed. Then I'm gonna um initiate a, a ballot question for the citizens to decide whether they want the. Tax to remain or not, so.
What timeframe are you thinking?
There's a election in November.
We have got this resolved by, by.
So, Susan, what's the deadline for anything we wanna put on the ballot for November?
So, um, direction from counsel, I did contact Stephanie Keys, the county clerk and recorder. And so the ballot content must be to her by September sixth.
Okay.
So that means um we have three council meetings prior to September sixth, we have the August first. We have the August fifteenth and the September fifth meeting. So it would have to be an initial posting and then a public hearing, so two meetings. To her by November, by September sixth.
So then our logical cutoff is the August fifteenth meeting period, full stop?
I, I can't answer that for you, you guys have to answer that question.
We have to go through the readings.
Special meeting. Be the other option.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, but.
Um.
I'm sorry, Steve.
Go ahead, Smitty.
Whatever it is. Um. With what, you know, council person Terry. Over there just said. She just took the words right out of my mouth.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm totally backing with that.
So. So, we'll try for the fifteenth. And with that. If that's the consensus of the council, we could also have a first reading prepared. For the fifteenth as well.
Well, here, here's my question, uh, first off, i- if, if the. City council were to sponsor the ballot initiative, that's one thing. It's another thing for citizens, which could have always been the case, citizens could have initiated the first uh ballot question about um the tax increase. But. For whatever reason, it ended up being the city council, so there's two ways to. To readdress this with the community, and that would be through a council um ballot question. Or a citizens initiative ballot question. Uh. In my mind, what we're trying to do tonight is simply provide um a more. Instructive way for the school district to report. The use of that tax, we're not, again, I'll go back to, we're not trying to repeal the tax. We have about, we have an ordinance in place right now, and, and, and when we get to that. Time of this discussion, I would like to recommend that we simply continue it until the fifteenth of August, not. Kill it or table it tonight. Uh, but I wanna have an opportunity for a discussion to occur with uh the BOE directors and with our staff. And with the city council members on um a very minor amendment to the existing IGA, just an, a means. And, you know, I, you know, I went, oh, I want it every month, well, I could be convinced every quarter. All I know right now is that we're not, we're not providing the, the specificity, I've always wanted to use that word. On how that tax is being spent. Granted, in the past, there was a, a, a more general, um, collegial discussion of how the tax was spent. But in today's, today's environment, that's no longer acceptable, and I know that, I've been told that by. Literally hundreds of people. So. What I'm, I, what I just wanted to clarify is, a citizens initiative is one thing, that's how we ended up with our new STR ordinance. A council initiative is another thing. And if we have reached such an impasse that we can't come to an agreement on this new reporting protocol. Then I would recommend that the council put it up to a citizens vote and let this, and let the council write that ballot question. But I, in the meantime, I'm very um positive about our ability to just come to another. Another level in that IGA, intergovernmental agreement. That says, we didn't give you very good guidance on how we wanted to see the reporting come back to us, and not us, the community. Here's another way to do it, let's let the experts work on it, and we'll amend the IGA, and then we'll kill that ordinance. The one that's on the table tonight. In August.
Mayor.
Thank you, Carol. Yes.
Um. You know, on, on the listening end of this, let me express to you what I'm hearing. First, we're talking about going to, from. From an original IGA that, by the way, is signed by both the city and the school district, let's not forget that.
Hmm.
But in, in the. In the spirit of cooperation. We, we will certainly look at that, and I agree with you, Ms. Harvey, that I don't see any reason we couldn't come to some agreement. But now a new thing's being put on the table tonight about monthly reporting. How far is this gonna go with additional requirements? That, that is not fair.
I threw it out on the table and I apologize, it was just an idea. May, may I make a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
We have, we have worked hard to come to a position where we have some agreement to cooperate. Can we not? Accept that, can we not see what it looks like over the next year? And if there's still an issue, we have that conversation. Because. Because that's. I think that's. Gives an opportunity for them to respond to the requests of the public. And to respond to the needs of our taxpayers.
Uh, ma'am, ma'am, mayor, I totally agree with you, um, I think we've, you know, into this conversation, we've built in. Um. An option that I don't, what I would call the nuclear option of repealing the tax via a, a ballot question. And that's not why we're here tonight, we're discussing just, okay, we, we got your report in June and. It, it, it just didn't scratch the itch. And it's just as much our fault as anyone because we didn't ask for a more specific means of reporting. We're suggesting now and, and recommending to the staff. To tweak that reporting uh protocol. And hopefully get that done within the next four weeks. And then, and then we will discuss whether or not. The ordinance that is still in existence shall be repealed or not. Am I incorrect?
That's exactly where I stand, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to, to go round down the dais and get consensus or not. To give direction to the staff. To form that. Uh, committee to. Uh, dr- to put together that language in the IGA and, and bring that back. Smitty, are you, give consensus for that?
Yeah.
George?
Yep.
Carol?
Yes, and the other thing I would add to that requirement for the staff to come back with a draft is that we also have. Um, a collaborative meeting with the all stakeholder holders.
Yes, okay.
I concur as well.
Thank you, Terry. Catherine, and I do as well, you guys have your direction. Thank you, Mick, for joining us and helping us with that. All right, now we need to take up this ordinance, um. Fourteen seventy-one, this is the public hearing. Um, the council has an opportunity to have a, a discussion on this, and then we do need to open it up for public comment. Do we not, Joe?
The, the only discussion point I, I would say is, um. I, I'm with uh council member Harvey on this, we, we continue it until the August fifteenth meeting.
Anything else, counsel? All right. Carol?
Uh, uh, only that I would, I'd, uh, that would be my um intent, um, that we continue it until. A date certain of uh fifteen August, uh, but before I make that motion, I certainly wanna hear the input from the public, thank you, anyone else?
All right. I'll open a public hearing, Suzanne, do we have folks signed up to speak on this issue?
We certainly do.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is Lance.
Lance, are you with us?
Did he leave? Okay, all right. Second speaker is Donald Hwang.
Yes. Mr. Hwang, when you get to the podium, if you'd share your full name and your city of residence, please.
Good evening, my name's Donald Hwang, I live in Woodland Park.
Thank you, sir.
And council members, mayor. Um, I would like to express my deep concern. Over the curriculum being enforced upon the students of the Woodland Park School District, namely, American birthright. As a white male Christian conservative, one might think I would. As a white male Christian conservative, one might think I would support American birthright, but its agenda is neither Christian nor conservative, in my view. As a conservative, I believe schools should teach our children how to think, not what to think. And the current school board majority ran on a platform of rejecting what they viewed as a liberal ideology in the schools, which sounded conservative. But they didn't get ideologies out of the school. Rather, they doubled down and substituted their own Christian nationalist dogma. This is not at all conservative. I truly hope that each one of us takes the time to sit down and read the American birthright curriculum and form their own educated opinion. But in the meantime, let me share a small piece of it. This is a direct quote. "We judge that a great many pedagogies actively inhibit student learning, including action civics, so-called anti-racism, civic engagement, critical race theory, current events learning, inquiry-based learning, media literacy, project-based learning, social emotional learning, and virtually any pedagogy that claims to promote diversity, equity, inclusion, or social justice." So according to American birthright, teachers should avoid discussing civil engagement, current events, inquiry-based learning, media literacy, social emotional learning, and any discussion of diversity, equity, inclusion, or so-called racism. American birthright seeks not only to teach our children what to think, but also not to think. These are not conservative values. American birthright is actively walling off Woodland Park School District students from any source of information that does not reflect the Christian nationalist agenda, and our tax dollars are subsidizing this. So should the city of Woodland Park continue to provide tax dollars for Woodland Park School District? No, at least not until American birthright is removed from the curriculum. Like the majority, I want the best for our students. So I recommend that instead of eliminating the tax, that these monies be withheld until American birthright is abolished from our school system. Thank you for your time and thank you for all you do to support the city of Woodland Park.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Suzanne McDonough.
Suzanne, if you would please give us your full name and your city of residence, please?
Suzanne McDonough, Woodland Park. I'm very scared, so.
Take a deep breath because we will not bite you.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, city council, for allowing me to speak at this time. Um, I have been a resident of Woodland Park for nearly thirty-one years. All four of my children have attended Woodland Park Schools and graduated from the local high schools. Some longtime residents may remember me. I was a crossing guard at Columbine Elementary for fourteen years. Throughout the past three decades, I have supported bonds to expand the middle school and benefit the high school, as well as the sales tax for the betterment of our school district. As a long-term resident and Taylor County taxpayer, I am incensed that there has been a professionally, that there has not been a professionally rigorous line-by-line accounting of every penny that the current school board has spent over the last three years. I call upon you to order a thorough forensic investigation by an outside certified accounting firm of the school board's expenditures. No longer will I or other taxpayers tolerate vague pie charts and slipshod financial documents on the school district's website that do not precisely identify every expenditure, including all payouts to school attorney Brad Miller. Our citizens deserve better than the constant financial sleight of hand from this school board and the refusal to respond swiftly and precisely to core requests, which if exposed, will paint a terrible picture of poor fiscal responsibility, zero transparency, and misappropriation of funds by superintendent Ken Witt. Regardless of how you choose to handle the current tax issue, this city council owes it to its citizens, its Woodland Park citizens to begin a forensic investigation of the school board's expenditures starting now before any more damage is done to our district and its students.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Mike Demuth.
Council Mike has identified himself in his place of residence previously.
Okay, um, I uh didn't actually plan on speaking. Uh, I guess I accidentally signed up to speak um twice, but I'll go ahead and speak. Um, Mike Demuth, District Accountability Committee, uh Chair. Um, honestly, I think a lot of the mumbo, a lot of the mumbo jumbo that we hear um is just not true. Um, there, there's accountability, there's audits run by the, by the school district. This is all just a bunch of, of, of stuff that people have heard on Facebook. Um, and, 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 and we, and we know that because if, if there were.
Please.
If there were, um.
Ma'am. Thank you.
If there were. I'm not saying everything that people say is. Okay, um, well, thank you, folks. I appreciate it. I, I do, um, I do think that uh a lot of what we hear has been said on Facebook so many times that people actually start to believe it. Um, a lot of lies. Um, and, uh, and, and I don't think that, that there's any, um, I, I mean, nobody's ever found any money missing. Nobody's, if you can't, if you can't find it, just because you can't find it, doesn't mean it's missing. Just because you can't get online and find it from the core things doesn't mean that it's missing. So I'm, I'm sorry, but you know, the, the district gets audited every year. There's never been anything um, mi- there, there's never been a, any kind of money missing. There's never been anything wrong. Uh, i- it's not this board's, uh, this city council's responsibility to um, to uh discuss the, the, the American birthright. That has nothing to do with it. It has nothing to do with this, with these funds at all. American birthright is, is something the school district decided to do. The taxpayers' money has nothing to do with that. So anyway, sorry, I'm not prepared for that, but thank you.
Thank you. Gwen? Gwen, when you get to the podium, if you'd give us your full name and city of residence, please?
Thank you. Gwen Pecron, uh, Woodland Park. Thank you for the oppor- opportunity to speak to you, Mayor Case and council members. I appreciate your resounding public commitment in council's June sixth work session to continue to support your school district staff, families, and students by keeping the one point oh nine percent educational sales tax and to work collaboratively with the district for a joint solution of accountability presentation. There have been many iterations of the fantastic programs, educational opportunities, student achievements, and employment opportunities throughout our community, which is why this funding is so critical to local economy, staff, full-time students, and part-time students. Whatever council determines is the route for the specific sales tax management, I believe the citizens throughout the county will take note of the precedent. As you may have no- noted in similar fashion, local citizens have been quite vocal about the state of the streets and the one point one percent road sales tax that is meant for specific road items. Thus, to hold strong to council's passion and commitment for review of taxpayers' special sales tax funding, uh, citizens look forward to seeing this process, whatever it may be, with this uh city's one percent road sales tax. And perhaps that option, that four-ten option, is what will work for both. Given the council's stance that specific tax needs to be highlighted separately for citizens' review, citizens may require that the ambulance services point five percent sales tax or the library's funding to serve our children and adults also adhere to this process of accountability presentation, whatever that ends up being. When selecting the process, please consider the variables that differ among organizations. In education, the general ledger and chart of accounts is quite complex and different from the city's accounting and reporting. It will require the finance departments to establish nearly two hundred fifty lines of code to align CDE's accounting to the city's current budget presentation, like the four-ten option. This is very possible and will take some time. The CDE code includes district, the school, the type of educator, whether they're full-time or part-time, whether it's an expense for uh, construction and so forth. So a lot of those things are found in that code. There are different uh fiscal years and fiscal milestones for each entity. The city is on a January through December fiscal year and the school districts are on a July one through Ju- uh, June thirtieth fiscal year. There may be various auditing times for these organizations. I am not sure when the au- annual audit of the city, county, ambulance, or library finances are, or if they are audited, but schools and districts are audited June through October. How to best efficiently disseminate this information to citizens? Is it sufficient to include in the organization's multiple public uh, budget presentations as the city does with the road budget, the four-ten? Can it be the same with the four-ten fund presentations? Can it be quarterly? All these things that you have discussed. Do the city's roads a sales tax and district's educational sales tax need to be managed within a grant system, which is your option two or option three? This likely won't be effective, which you have already discussed. Thank you for keeping these considerations in mind as you look at the options for specific sales tax management. These funds are critical to our school district, our education, our children, our staff, and our community, past, present, and future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Nicole Wagoner.
Nicole, if you would give us your full name and city of residence, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Nicole Wagoner. I live in Woodland Park. Good evening, Meta Mayor and City Council members. I am a member of the Merit Academy Board. If none of you know that already, but I do not speak for the board tonight. I just wanted to make it clear that I am in complete agreement with this council that there should be transparency and oversight of the sales tax funds to make sure they are used for the original purpose approved by the taxpayers of Woodland Park. The idea of letting visitors and tourists contribute to our local schools is still preferable to asking for an increase in property taxes. Ultimately, I suspect the Board of Education is responsible for using the funds appropriately and see no harm in the city assisting with their proper distribution. I do appreciate Councilwoman Harvey's comments about this council not intending to repeal the sales tax. I have to believe that in your hearts, you understand that the removal of these funds from our schools would only serve to harm our children's futures, beginning with the education that they can receive today. Ultimately, what is best for our children is to maxif- maximize the efficacy of scarce funds, not create a further need. I thank you for working with the Board of Education to finalize this discussion so we may all move forward, keeping the best interests of our children as a number one priority. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Victor LaBarrio.
Good evening, Victor. Your, your full name and city of residence, please?
Victor LaBarrio, Woodland Park. Good evening, mayor and council. I just wanted to thank you for making sure that you're gonna, you're not gonna do away with this tax. But as I've observed what's happened over the past year, it's been over a year that this has been going on. And frankly, when I look at the requirements, Councilwoman Harvey, that you have put forth, I'm confused. You know, it started out with that there was stonewalling from the school board. Then there was that there was information that was regularly shared between the school board and the city council. I looked into that even with the previous council. I asked for meeting minutes, accountability, action items. There was nothing. Those were meetings over coffee and pastries. I'm all for accountability and I'm glad that you're finally getting down to this, but it's taken a year. And it seems like whenever the city wants something, the council only has a, or the, the school board only has a week or two to respond. But yet, when it comes back to the city, it's, again, it's been a year. So I just hope that you guys can come to a quick conclusion. You know, this school, these monies go to schoolchildren of the whole county, not just the city of Woodland Park. And so I would just thank you again for your efforts in working collaboratively with the school board and bringing this to, to a collaborative conclusion and do away with this ordinance to remove that tax. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tony Perry.
Tony, if you'd just give us your full name and city of residence, please?
Yes, ma'am. Tony Perry, um, the city of Woodland Park. Uh, while I've been sitting here, I've rewritten this seven times, so I will read it in the effort of being more succinct. And you'll be glad to know that it has shortened tremendously over those seven revisions. So, um, thank you, council. I want to thank uh city manager Vassalotti for putting in the work and in my opinion, finding a brilliant solution that addresses the concerns of the members of the council and is a tool for the BOE to add a layer of oversight and protection. Option one works, adds transparency, and respects the election, elected BOE to improve accounting and oversight. It is the best option. There is no other option. The other two, I think, were uh, it's always good to give options, but clearly number one is up there for a reason. And before I make the, the next comments, um, I, I've been here a while and um, some of us may remember that in the early two thousands, uh, the school district was embezzled to the tune of approximately half a million dollars. Kind of a significant thing. It was a long-term accountant with the school district, very beloved. And um, there were no internal controls in place, no checks and balances, and um, just a very sad situation for that for the community, for the school district. And since then, each subsequent superintendent and BOE, in my opinion, have constantly tweaked and approved uh what I call internal controls, which is kind of what rules my world. So uh, with all respect intended, and I gave Mr. Bates a quick, he doesn't know what I'm gonna say, but I disagree with Mr. Bates that monthly accounting reports are an onerous burden. I would suggest that these reports can be posted for the benefit of the council and the public. I prefer monthly reports, uh, but quarterly should be the minimum. And frankly, I would not hire a CFO if they could not produce monthly accounting reports, period. Uh, I mean, end of story, full stop, no matter how much I like them. So when you do your interviews, make sure you find an accountant competent enough to produce those with almost no effort if it's set up properly. So I think it should be an interview question that, of whether they can make that happen or not. You know, as a CEO, I use my monthly accounting reports to make sure that we are on track with budget and to make sure there are no anomalies, which may be a simple miscoding issue by one of our team members, right? Everyone makes mistakes and uh if you're reviewing those monthlies, monthly, uh, and frankly, there are probably fifteen general ledger items that I look at daily. Sometimes I look at them at eleven o'clock at night, so I don't forget to do it in the morning. So um, it's just a standard accounting thing. Mr. Vassalotti, I'm sure can validate any accountant, anyone that's in the business of uh having oversight of money and being responsible for money and internal controls and clearly see the benefit of that. So I do disagree with Mr. Bates on that and I think they can find a competent accountant. However, I do disagree with Ms. Harvey and I do agree with Mr. Bates that um, this resolution should be killed tonight. Um, I've been sitting back, kind of quietly observing a lot of things in our community and um, you know, it's time for the adults to show up. And what I mean by that is that with every situation that arises, especially with respect to the school district, we should just ask one simple question, what is best for the children? And I'm sorry, I believe that if you kill this resolution, it doesn't uh prevent you. Let's say that we leave tonight, we're kumbaya, and this IGA doesn't get adopted. The BOE doesn't cooperate, uh, the task force fails, which I suspect if it fails, then probably everyone in the task force should be thinking about resigning. Uh, I don't see that happening. So let's begin healing. Um, you always have uh, these tools. We have citizen tools called ballot initiatives and they should be done properly, properly noticed, and with a proper question that's actually understandable, not confusing. Um, and so it's time for the adults to show up. Uh, there's no downside to killing this other than and, and all of leaf and good faith to let some people breathe a sigh of relief and instead of talking over each other, instead of, instead of talking about the past, the, the past year, the past whatever, let's talk about getting this done in the next couple of weeks and let's get to the school, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Eric Lockman.
Eric Lockman, Woodland Park. Mr. Perry stole all my thunder. Uh, I agree one hundred percent with what he's saying. Um, I, I would want to thank Aaron. Um, you brought accounting into this with an accounting solution. I, honestly, I feel like council's kind of fumbled around a little bit because they don't have your background and so they didn't know what to ask and how to ask it. And so once they came to you, you, you've got a good solution and solution one's the right one. And so once they came to you, you've got a good solution and solution one's the right one. Mayor Case, I want to thank you also for just having a cool head and keeping everybody on track and on a course to solution. I was glad to hear that the solution for having the lodging tax being so obfuscated was to not get rid of the lodging tax. That's what it sounds like we're trying to do with, with this ordinance. And if you look at the whereas statements, they, they don't align with what I've heard today of. We've had productive discussions. We've made headway. We're looking for oversight. This isn't about oversight. This is about a difference in ideologies and that's why people are coming together with distrust. And that's what's happening. We're not talking about lodging tax. We're not wondering where's every line item in for the lodging tax. And there's another pie chart. Three point four million dollars went to the police station and it's a pie chart with three pie slices and no one's complaining about that. Are we ready to defund the police in Woodland Park? No, we're not. And I wouldn't suggest it. And so the city council has come to a point where they've, they've come to the table and they're ready to negotiate. I don't, I think Mr. Bates has fumbled around a little bit too. He's not an accountant. And so he's looking for that help to get, get him there. And I believe if you have somebody that's worth their salt as an accountant, they're gonna get you a report every month, but I understand he doesn't want to speak to that. And so that's, that's really what I have. I am. Yeah, I didn't have anything prepared, but I would, I would definitely go with number one and I would kill the, the ordinance today as a goodwill on, on council's side. So that this side of the dais doesn't look at it as a, as a threat. It makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nicole. Notice I don't even say your last name anymore.
Thank you. Nicole Broccoli, Woodland Park. I've also rewritten this number of times. It was mentioned tonight that a lot of stuff is being published, is being spoken about in the community and a lot of lies after a while sound like something that might be the truth. And maybe to some of those, there is a small aspect to it. I can just encourage everyone to do your own research as far as we as citizens can on many of those issues. Also, American birthright, which by the way, is not a curriculum. That's number one. It's a social studies, study standard that gives guidance to schools and teachers to create a curriculum. And Woodland Park, by the way, is not a guinea pig and they're not the first ones to adopt that, which is another thing that you hear everywhere. American birthright is largely based on existing curriculums in Massachusetts and in Florida. And since it was adopted, many, many states across the nation have started revising their curriculum in line with those standards. And among those are Virginia, South Dakota, Ohio, Louisiana, Indiana, Arizona, Tennessee, and many more. But at the end of the day, this is not what's important tonight. And this is not what we're talking about tonight. And this is also not a reason or any consideration that should be taken into account when talking about this ordinance that's in front of us tonight. Whether you agree or not with American birthright does not give you the authority as a city council to defund our schools. And you've told us over and over again that that is not your plan. Yet, in a side sentence, we then hear again, let's continue this ordinance. Now, I don't have to tell you that you won't get the best result out of a negotiation if you walk into the room with a gun pulled. And that's what this is. And we've done this long enough now and enough is enough. You got to revise the IGA, you got it signed. You are completely and utterly reliant on the school board right now to be willing to even sit at the table again to revise this. It's in the interest of the citizens and that's why we're glad that the school board is willing to do that. But you have to admit, you had that chance. You had that chance already. I've heard many really great things tonight and I believe that we have a basis for a solution that's gonna satisfy both sides. But this ordinance needs to go tonight to build trust again and to unify this community and to show to the community that's also what your interest is. And like it was said before, if this does not result in what we're all hoping for, nothing stops you from bringing it back. And then it will have a lot more support from the citizens that are waiting to see results. But as of today, it has to go. Thank you.
Thank you. KJ Lee. Sir, if you'd give us your full name and city of residence, please.
KJ, KJ Lee, Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak as a Woodland Park resident and business owner and father of two children who are part of this school district. I am so grateful to hear the council say that it is not their intention to repeal the much-needed tax to provide funding for our schools. We need resources. The school needs resources. And the result of having those resources is better-equipped children, which will one day occupy the seats that you occupy today. As a taxpayer and resident, I seek to, and I would hope that everyone in this room agrees, I seek to sow into the future of this amazing city in every possible aspect. And certainly having tourism helps support that is a great thing. So that's wonderful. That's amazing that we're, it sounds like we're all in agreement. The question though, that I have is if we're in agreement that the tax needs to stand, why does the agenda item say repeal the tax? Now, that's a rhetorical question, just something to noodle, noodle on. By the same token, or the other side of the coin, I suppose, the important thing is that I steward a multimillion-dollar business and absolutely I'm accountable for every single line item. I had to turn in a receipt for five dollars and forty-three cents in tolls. It's that critical, even at the level that we're at. And so whether it's the police department or the school board or anyone else who is using vague methods of accounting and reporting where those expenses are going, that's really important. These are taxpayer dollars. These are taxpayer dollars and they should be accountable. I think option one is great. To echo support for that, a lot of those who spoke before me said a lot of really good things. So in summary, let's keep the tax in place. Everyone, the citizens have spoken. And also, let's increase accountability for that. Because we have a standard of excellence in Woodland Park and improving the accountability is a way of setting that standard and continuing that standard of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then our final speaker mayor is Leanna. Leanna, if you'd share your full name and city of residence, please.
My name is Leanna Tally and I'm from Woodland Park.
Thank you.
I was not planning to come tonight or speak tonight. I was actually working on funeral arrangements for my mother this evening. But I was sitting at home, listening to the Zoom meeting and then felt the need to come in and speak on behalf of the CFO of the district, because there is not one right now. To refresh your memories, put my face back with emails you've received from me. I am currently the CFO at Merit Academy. I'm a CPA. I have been for almost 15 years. I consider myself a school finance expert at this point with my experience. And sitting here and listening and sitting at home and listening, I'm really happy to hear that the school board, that city council, that you, Aaron, have got together to discuss what would be a feasible option. But there is a vacancy in consultation right now of the person at the district that is going to be responsible for actually putting this into play. Dr. Peckron alluded to the fact that the CDE is who actually dictates our chart of account structuring within school finance. And there are reporting requirements that are, they're the number one of how things are set up is how CDE requires it and it is very, very specific. And so I ventured to guess that the reason you found Steamboat Springs having this kind of off-to-the-side 501(c)(3) that manages their sales tax dollars is because the fact that they ran into internal problems on how to both satisfy CDE and also satisfy their city reporting requirements. And so I just feel like that is something that wholeheartedly needs to be consulted with. The CFO that will be responsible for producing this. I agree completely with Mr. Perry, who stood up here and spoke about monthly reporting being an easy thing to do if it is set up correctly. And that is the concern, is getting this set up correctly. I also want to speak about the fact that people are saying, you know, the, the, the need for every dollar being tracked. The man, the gentleman that was just up here was speaking about that. The district does track every dollar. The thing is, is it's been tracked through the general fund, which makes then the carving out of the sales tax dollars more complicated because it is not specifically assigned to the sales tax funding. And so again, it's like there's not a vacancy of the tracking of expenses. There is just the ability to easily pull it off and say, this is exactly the sales tax piece. And so just to kind of alleviate like some of that, again, I think that's probably all I have right now. I sent you guys emails. I hope that you guys have taken the time to actually read through the data I presented to counteract some of the points that were brought last council meeting by some people that were misinformed. Just really quick to talk to the public about it, 64% is not the amount of funding from the state that Merit Academy is receiving. That was a miscalculation by the gentleman who stood up here and presented that. Merit Academy receives just over 24% of the state funding. And the other piece was about ESSER funding. That again, was following correct CDE guidance for Merit Academy to be receiving those funds. So thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Thank you, Suze. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the council that did not sign up? All right. Thank you. I will close the public comment portion of this public hearing. And council, I would just like to point out something that came to mind in listening to the public comment is that this council at any time can ask for an ordinance to be brought that we're looking at tonight. It doesn't have to be this one. If something were to bring the council to the point where they wanted to consider reducing the sales tax by 1.09%, that can be brought forward at any time with the direction of the council. Does not have to be this ordinance. So with that, I'm gonna turn this back over to you all.
Yeah, I was gonna chime in on that too. The, it's interesting because I've heard some council members say, well, we're gonna, we want the citizens to do that if we were to remove this. Or if, if we were to consider removing the tax, we would put a ballot initiative forward so that the citizens do. This ordinance does not do that. This ordinance does not allow for that to happen. So, you know, after hearing public comment tonight, I think we've had enough input that I'm, I'm willing to kill it.
Thank you. And since I initially jumped on the bandwagon and said, by God, I'm gonna continue this thing till the last meeting in August, this is one of the few exceptions, and I have to say this honestly, that public input did change my mind. And I'll say, say it because I know that the ordinance that we're considering tonight is already dated. It, it was intended to, to bring the district back to us with a reporting regimen and, and accomplish that. You know, part of me is going, trust but verify. But the continuation of the ordinance at this point is probably counterproductive. We know we can bring back an amended or a new ordinance if necessary. We've already discussed an option of possibly a ballot initiative sponsored by the council. So I've changed my mind. I, I would, I will certainly wait for discussion of the council, but I, I would, I'm ready to move to vote. The motion is always confusing. Do you vote yes? Do you vote no? What is the motion? I'll help you with that. Okay, we'll get to that point. I'd like to hear from the rest of the council, but in this case, understanding that this is considered to be not the best way to enter into new negotiations on an amended IGA, I would be willing to vote no on the ordinance tonight. Thank you. I think you mean yes. Vote no on the ordinance. The motion would be to approve the ordinance. And then we would vote no. The council, kill it, vote no. Yeah. Too many double negatives there. Okay. Yes. We tried the other way once and it did not work. It was worse than. Anyway, I'll help you all with that. Not to tell you how to vote, just to tell you how to interpret the motion.
So I have to be honest, I don't see any reason to kill it. I think we should table it till the August 15th meeting. Nothing means anything until it's signed. And so, you know, I, well, I appreciate Councilmember Harvey's difference from hearing public comment. We only really heard from one side. So I think it's incumbent upon us until we have something that's signed to continue this ordinance accordingly. And that would be what I would vote for and support.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so I'm, I'm kind of somewhat with Carol. I'd initially come in here and totally agree that we should table it to August 15th. But if we kill it tonight and we don't get where we want to get by August 15th, we can certainly have a backup ordinance written by staff if we direct them to do so, that we can then pass to put the first reading on, you know, for the ballot initiative. And, and, and so that's. That, that would be an approach or it would be initiate a new. Or initiated new, yeah. Or initiated new. We put ourselves on the line by doing that in representing the community. Correct. That would be an ordinance. Or we can go back to the voters and say. Right. So we could do one of two ordinances, August 15th. We could kill this one tonight and we could still accomplish what we're trying to accomplish, I think, if we don't get what we want. And get what we want is not necessarily the right word, but you know, if we don't, we don't get to the point where we think we're making progress. Resolution. A resolution. Thank you. And, and ultimately, the objective is to provide a clear and concise guiding directive to the school district on how we want to see accountability represented. Right. How we want to see it based on what we think the citizens want to see. So, yeah. Thank you. Steve, do you have anything to share?
Well, excuse me. Bottom line for me is that, you know, I want to do what's right for the kids and the teachers and the staff. But then there's that part that I feel whatever produces the best transparency for our community, because that's all the community wants. They want to see where their money's going without any doubt. So whatever produces that, that way is how I will go.
Thank you. I guess I'm Terry. Do you have anything to say? Hey. I am, I am on the same page with Carol and with George and Catherine. We always have the opportunity to consider an ordinance, be it this one, this one, as Carol said, is dated. This, this doesn't even talk to what we would expect it to say today if we were even considering it. We've all stated and, and on, in the public, we have no intentions of, of taking away the tax. So, so why leave this out there? So if we, if we feel like we need to consider another ordinance, we can do that. Two council members can direct the staff to bring an ordinance to, to the next meeting or to the council. So I would, I would agree to, to take this from hanging over us, to go into, as, as Mick said, good faith into negotiating with our task force to bring back a new IGA.
into negotiating with our task force to bring back a new IGA to the, to the council and to the, the school board. So that's, that's what I think. And a lot of it is the public comment that was shared tonight. I, I, I have to agree. I think it's dated and it doesn't really do anything.
Madam Mayor, one more, I would just also caution that we not throw around the phrase task force, task.
Thank you. You're right. The negotiating parties.
Yeah. And, and, and I, you know, there, there are, I hope we can have Ms. Tally participate from Merit Academy and, and my condolences for her mother's loss, but
Yes, thank you.
You know, the, the district right now doesn't have a finance officer and, and I really would appreciate her input on this well, as well. But I would not envision a task force. I would envision, as we have asked, that the staff come up with an amendment to the IGA and that we would discuss that in a collaborative environment in a work session.
Thank you.
All right. With that, counsel, I don't usually do this, but I'm going to make a motion and look for a second. And this most motion will be to approve the ordinance.
Okay.
And for those of you that do not wish to approve the ordinance, you would vote no. For those of you that would like to approve the ordinance, you would vote net yes. If it doesn't, I just caution you about a yes vote. Or we can also talk about the, see if the council wants to give consensus to, or to table and take this to the fifteenth. So.
Yeah, can we, can we?
What do you mean? You caution us against?
Well, if you, if you vote yes for this ordinance, in order to consider this ordinance, we need to make a motion to approve it. Okay?
So we're bringing it off the table.
It will rescind the test.
Right. We've tried that before.
It doesn't work. It never works. Doesn't work.
So if, if, if the mayor's motion, once seconded, is fails, then we come back with another motion and that motion could be to continue the ordinance. So the motion on the table now, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you would like to move to approve.
She hasn't made it.
Oh, she didn't make it?
No, I haven't made it yet.
Oh, okay. When you make it, it will be to approve the mo- to approve the ordinance.
To kill the ordinance. A yes vote kills.
Yes.
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 The majority of those voting for kill the ordinance.
That's it. Yeah.
I will make a motion that we kill ordinance fourteen seventy-one, series twenty twenty-four. An ordinance of the city council of the Woodland Park, Colorado, reducing the city's sales tax by one point oh nine percent. Effective January first, twenty twenty-five.
I will second that motion, but point of information, Mr. Parliamentarian, are we in fact considering a motion to end or kill the ordinance? So a yes vote would kill the ordinance.
You are correct.
Then I will second it.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. So everyone, counsel, is everyone clear on what a yes vote means and what a no vote means before I take the roll?
Just to make sure, I am. A yes vote would mean that we would kill the ordinance as it stands. No vote means we do not kill the ordinance.
Correct.
Perfect.
Thank you. Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to kill the ordinance passes six one. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you to everyone in the public for your input. It was very helpful this evening. All right. Item nine B, approval of ordinance fourteen seventy-six, series twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the city council of Woodland Park, Colorado, adopting by reference the twenty twenty-four edition of the model traffic code. And it goes on to say a lot of other things, but we're going to leave it there.
And Mayor?
As written.
Erica Romberg from our office is joining us remotely. She drafted this ordinance and the next one.
Thank you. Eric, can you promote Erica? Thank you.
All right. This is yours, Attorney Wilson and Ms. Erica.
There's Erica.
Where's Erica?
There she is. Okay. Welcome, Erica.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much, Mayor and counsel. Before you, you have an ordinance to adopt the twenty twenty-four model traffic code. The Colorado Department of Transportation puts together the model traffic code and sporadically amends it to come into line with amendments that are made to traffic ordinances within the state. And that's what happened this time. The last time that Woodland Park adopted the new model traffic code was actually back in two thousand and ten. There has been a new model traffic code since then in two thousand and twenty that the city chose not to adopt. But now we're back again with the twenty twenty-four new model traffic code. Basically, what this does is it brings, as I said, all of our traffic codes that are used municipally in line with the state codes for traffic. I'm pretty sure all, but if not close to all of the Colorado municipalities have the model traffic code in one form or another. And so the purpose of this ordinance is simply to adopt by reference the twenty twenty-four model traffic code.
Thank you. Counsel? Questions of staff or comments?
I do, I do actually have one. Yeah, thank you. So when, when the council didn't adopt the twenty twenty model code and, and now we're looking at twenty-four, does that mean the twenty twenty stuff is in there that we, that they didn't want to adopt? Does it, does it flow through?
So the amendments do flow through. And when I said that the council didn't adopt the twenty twenty-one, I don't know if that's because they chose not to adopt the twenty twenty code or if it just simply wasn't an ordinance put in front of council.
Okay.
That's, that's what my, that's what happened.
I remember.
It was during COVID, they didn't, they just didn't adopt it. It wasn't that they didn't want to.
Oh, thank you. That, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Anything else, counsel?
So Catherine? Um, one, I tried to go back and read the two thousand and ten model code to this one, and there's not even a single paragraph that matches. So this is way better. But did we get any feedback from the judge or from the police chief? As far as not adopting it or having any issue with it?
Erica, do you have an answer to that?
I do. We actually did have a meeting with the chief, the municipal judge, the municipal prosecutor, myself and Ms. Leclerc. When it was announced that this new twenty twenty-four code was put out, it was my understanding from that meeting that there was wide support for moving forward with this twenty twenty-four model traffic code. Again, really what it does is it brings the municipal codes in line with the state statutes. And so I believe that was the purpose of wanting to adopt this new code.
That's all? Anyone else on council?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, never mind. They're, they went away.
Okay.
Oh, nope, she's back. Judge McClintock would like to weigh in.
All right, then I will. We have public comments? All right. Bring her on in. There she is. Hello, Judge.
Hi. Sorry, I just, now if you guys knew I was here, I've been here. Sorry.
Welcome.
How are you?
Good. How are you? Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate, we did have that meeting, as Erica mentioned. And we were all in agreement that this should be adopted. Due to COVID, we were doing everything remotely in two thousand and twenty. And so things were not adopted during that time period. And we did want to go ahead and adopt all of these revisions. Basically, we have been going forward and because the ordinances, as they were written, have always made reference to the model traffic code. We have always just taken that to mean that they were referring to the most updated version of the model traffic code. However, really, we need to make it official and have it referring to the most updated version. So I think if you adopt what has been proposed here, then we will have all of our i's dotted and our t's crossed here. And so the police department will be, in effect, writing tickets correctly and everything will be done exactly as it should be. So I think everyone will be happy to have it done this way if you adopt the ordinance as it's been proposed here.
And I just wanted to add, we did create a new part of the code as part of this ordinance, which was also discussed at the meeting. And the purpose of that was to allow the police department to cite other minor traffic things such as expired license plates and driving without a driver's license into municipal court. And that language, I believe, the judge has had a chance to review, and if she has any issues with it, would have brought them up. But we took, again, that language from the state statutes. And again, the purpose of this is just so that people can come to municipal court on all aspects of their ticket rather than having to go into municipal court for part of it and county court for a, a simple expired plate.
Right. And that was more a request from the police department that they asked that they could write those tickets into municipal court just to make it easier for citizens in Woodland Park to come to municipal court rather than having to go to Cripple Creek or expired tags and things like that. So we thought that that made sense. If they were going to be coming to municipal court, it's oftentimes easier for people to come to our court rather than going to Cripple Creek. So that made sense to write that into our court instead. So.
Thank you. Counsel, anything else? Right. I would look for a motion.
Well, actually, if I can speak. Reading the ordinance today, it, it's pretty cool because you can actually ride a snowmobile in town. As long as you stay in the far right lane. I never knew that.
Before I move on, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council? Seeing no one. Suze, we don't have anyone else online?
No, ma'am.
All right, then I'll make a motion to approve ordinance fourteen seventy-six, series twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the city council of Woodland Park, adopting by reference the twenty twenty-four edition of the model tro- model traffic code as written.
I second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Suze?
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. All right. Nine C is approval of ordinance, ordinance fourteen seventy-seven, series twenty twenty-four, an ordinance, ordinance of the city council for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, amending Title V of the Woodland Park Municipal Code regarding wireless communication facility regulations to establish regulations for wireless communication facilities. Jeff, this is you again, and I assume it's Erica.
That's right.
Thank you again, Mayor and counsel. So for this ordinance, some of you will recall, but most of you were not on council when this occurred. There was a tower application in front of the council and prior council members were frustrated that there weren't more safeguards in place within the municipal code to give the, the city powers to regulate these wireless cellphone facilities. And so this ordinance was drafted back then and then brought up again this year as it didn't move forward at that time. But basically what this does is it gives the city regulations that it can, the most restrictive regulations that it can to regulate cellphone towers being placed within the city. This area of law is hypertechnical and so the ordinance itself is long and hypertechnical. But as I stated, gives the council the strictest regulations that we can under federal law. In order for these, in order to get these more comprehensive regulations, we looked at several other communities that regulate not only the small cell facilities, which the city currently has regulations for, but also all towers. The cities that we looked at included Lyons, Arvada, Longmont, Loveland, and Colorado Springs. And in addition to that, we consulted with our firm's telecom experts, Ken Feldman and Brandon Dittman, who are not only experts here in Colorado, but nationwide when it comes to these regulations. And so what we have in front of you, as I said, are our proposed regulations so that the city has some sort of power to regulate not only the small cell towers, but all towers within the city limits.
Thank you, counsel. Jeff?
Want to go? So as we discussed in the last meeting, when I jumped the gun a little bit, so my apologies for that. I have no issues with the ordinance other than section five dot two four dot oh seven oh clause B. I would like to see that entire section removed from the ordinance. That was my only comment from the last.
Yeah, what was that section?
If concerns regarding compliance with radio frequency emission standards for a WCF have been made to the city, the city may request that the owner or operator of the WCF provide information demonstrating compliance, so on and so forth. I contend that to even erect the communications facility to begin with, they already have to meet FCC requirements to start with. So my issue with that clause or that specific section is it just, there's no reason for it other than to add another thing on to our list that we may need to address i- i- if there was a reason to address it. So I stand behind the fact that the FCC already covers us there.
Erica, are you, are you able to speak to that? Like, what would we have the power to do if a citizen made a complaint about certain, you know, levied a complaint against a tower, I guess? What, what, I mean, none of us are, we don't walk around with spectrometers and couldn't, I couldn't tell you what we would do about that.
So I do agree with Councilmember Gear that the FCC is the regulator of this. And again, this was taken as part of our comprehensive look at what was going on in other jurisdictions and Lyons, which is had their ordinance also run through by our telecom experts, has this exact same language in there. And in speaking with Mr. Dittman earlier today, having noted your concern at the last one, basically what this does is it just gives the city an ability to go in and speak with the, the tower providers and ensure that they have the proper licensures and all of that. That being said, if they don't, our recourse is to go to the FCC. So it's really up to the council whether or not you wish to leave this in or not. But again, it gives the council and it gives the city more ability to check these big telecom providers.
Counsel? I, I will, I would vote to approve the ordinance as written myself. Yes?
Yeah.
And no one else has any comment?
I, I, I mean, I, I understand where Jeff's coming from, but it sounds like this is just covering the city and giving us the ability to ask questions before we go to the FCC. And is that how?
We'd have to go to the FCC. There's.
Well, so if we ask, if, if this gives us the ability to go ask the community, the wireless people what they're doing and then if they don't, the tower operator, and they don't give us the answers we want, then we can go to the FCC, correct? Is that?
Are you asking that a bit?
Yeah, I was asking, sorry, I was asking you, Emily. I mean, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you, what you, or Erica, sorry. I was trying to, so you're basically saying if we leave the clause in, we just have an extra layer of protection before we have to go to the FCC? We can get the information to take to the FCC or?
Yeah. That was my understanding from speaking with Mr. Dittman this afternoon.
Okay, so.
Yeah, but go ahead.
So, yeah, so I'm fine with leaving it in.
Yeah, but correct me if I'm wrong, to even get an, an application approved, they have to meet the FCC guidelines to begin with. So the, the clause goes on to state, if upon, so skipping a sentence, if upon review, the city finds that the facility does not meet federal standards, I'm just going to stop right there. None of us are qualified up here to, to make that determination. So I just don't see why we would put our. So I just don't see why we would put ourselves in that position to, to do that to begin with. That, that was my point of that language.
Erin, do we have telco experts? Is Ben a?
We do not.
Yeah, okay.
This is just discussion.
Yeah, we still have. Okay.
I mean, if, if no one else supports removing, and I'm not gonna die on this hill by any means, I just looked at the language and just felt like it was unnecessary and puts us in a position where we may be asked to make a determination that none of us are qualified to make.
That all? Any other comment before I ask the public? All right, Suzanne, do we have people signed up to?
We do. Our first speaker is Eric Lockman.
And Eric's identified himself in his place of residence, so Eric, just please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Thank you, counsel. Again, I feel like you guys feel like a fish out of water on this one. And so you're, you're having to, to to rely on experts and lawyers. And what I read in here is zoning and legal talk in order to protect the city. There's an indemnification clause in there to protect you from what? From risk. And who's got the risk? The city, right? And so let's keep that in there so that the city doesn't have to determine it. What it's saying is that, and I didn't write this, it's saying that the company has to prove compliance. We don't have to prove it, we just have to ask for it, okay? And so if people are concerned about 5G, and there's 5G as in FR1, frequency range one, frequency range two. Frequency range one goes up to four gig, that's what this tower is. And this tower is in between your home router of two point four or five gig, right? It's that, that frequency range. So people are comfortable with that. But there's also FR2, which is, goes up to seventy-one, seventy-two gigahertz. That's where people get concerned. And this actually has language in there to support high frequency. When it says five twenty-four zero two zero, section C, encourage the deployment of smaller, less intrusive WCS. They're smaller and less intrusive because they're every one hundred feet, they're everywhere, but they're small and they can only go so far because it's high frequency. I suggest that you table this and you get more input before you approve it. I'm not against this, but I think it's not all-inclusive, and I think you need more input before you go forward with this. Otherwise, it's gonna end up being another debacle like the school tax initiative. So just hold off on this. I'm not saying kill it, I'm saying table it, because there's a lot more discussion that needs to happen with this. Thank you.
Second speaker, Nicole.
Thank you. I'm not an expert on all the technical issues involving 5G. I thought I was an expert in legalese, but it took me a while to figure out when reading this ordinance, what it's actually about. Anyway, I'm, I'm a little bit worried about the things that I'm hearing tonight. I understand that this is a very technical issue and we can't all be experts on it. But you can get experts. And I think it would take the city definitely less time to get one compared to appealing to the FCC. This is your city. This is your health. This is your town. Council member Gier, Gier mentioned last time that this is the FCC's job, this is not our job. Your job is to represent the citizens of Woodland Park. Please do so. And if this ordinance does not provide you with the tools yet to do that, then it's not ready to take a vote on. There are creative ways of formulating restrictions in there that will give you the right, the authority to regulate placement of those towers. It does not have to be based on health reasons, as we've already heard, we're not allowed to do that. The FCC has ruled on that, we can't even question it. Yay for freedom. But there's other ways of doing this. And if you do not feel comfortable yet with the tools that this ordinance is giving you, and to be completely honest, it does not give you any tools. It's a cover-your-ass ordinance, it doesn't do anything for you or this city. Then please don't vote on it yet. Get more expert advice on it and on what we can do to keep a certain amount of authority and of decision power in this city. Because right now you're giving everything to the FCC. Is that really what you want? And is that really what you believe is in the best interest of our citizens? Thank you.
And then we have Brian Paul.
All right, Brian Paul, and yes, my address is Woodland Park.
Thank you.
This topic seems to be less important than a lot of the school issues. But our health is at stake here. Mr. Gear, that ordinance, which I have picked through, that section is the only section that gives you any teeth in this matter. FCC hasn't, has not done any testing since nineteen ninety-six regarding Wi-Fi. Technology has come a long way since then. There's a number of us that have put together a number of questions in the form of an affidavit. I'd like to give a copy.
Thank you.
I too hope you table this for the time being. The for instance, you know, one of the affidavits would be the undersigned have seen no evidence contrary to the fact that the base tower transmission's capability at max power frequency and focus settings is not safe for this community. And bottom line is, is chamber here is to protect the, the safety and welfare of the community. So if we're slowly being inundated by technology, potential harmful at max rate, right now it may be not dialed up, but does it have the capabilities to be dialed up? Does the capabilities enable it to be focused? Also, this tower is connected to the internet. Someone has the ability to log in and change its settings. For instance, the, the government agencies and Verizon have put out numerous notices to their employees that their own data has been hacked, has been compromised. So who's to say a Verizon employee mad at his bank data was disturbed by his own company says, oh, let me log into, let's pick Woodland Park, and let's mess with their tower settings. To me, that's a huge vulnerability. We are not against technology, but we're against technology overload. An idea of that is why we don't have Indy five hundred cars on our streets. That would be technology overload for our streets. These base towers in town may be tech overload. We could just force the, the bandwidth to be increased on Bluebird Hill. The older technology telephones work just fine. But these are military grade, and we truly need to address that. And the FCC and all the other alphabet federal government regulators do not do anything for us. They do it for the lobbyists. And I would hate to see the teeth of this ordinance be dropped because that is the one that you can rely on as little as you can, but please table this and we'll continue this soon. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else, Sues?
That's it, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to just address the council? All right. Looking to you all.
So I just would like to take a moment to remind counsel that the majority of this ordinance is to provide setback controls and allow us to have some influence over where both full, full-size wireless communication facilities and small cell wireless communication facilities are put. The, I don't think the intent of this ordinance is to delve into any of the other concerns around radiate, radiation emissions and things of that nature. So just like to just get that out there. And that's why I wanted that clause removed, to be honest with you.
And just to go further, Jeff, the reason this coun, this is before us, counsel, is the last time, and I believe Catherine was here, the last time we considered one of the towers, which is over by the, to be over by the aquatic center, it is not there. We found that our code does, did not give us any ability to determine any location and to deny a location. And so the council then asked the attorney and the staff to bring forward something that gave us more power, if you would, for the lack of a better word, more authority over determining locations of towers in our city. That's the basics of what this is for. This is not an ordinance to regulate the FCC. By any stretch, I mean, that would be preposterous for us to even think about regulating the FCC. So just some background, that is the, the intent of this ordinance is to give us more authority in making decisions because we had none the last time this something was before us, just to share some. And that's, that's correct. I mean, we, we had no choice. We couldn't.
Right.
We couldn't say no because we didn't want it at the school.
And it's unusual for a community of this size to not have any ordinance like this on its books. I was actually, when it got presented to us, I was actually, my first reaction was, wow, okay. I'm surprised that there wasn't already something. And for the most part, the way it's written is, is fairly straightforward for what it's worth.
And understand that this is an attempt to do better, to make our code better and more useful for us. And we may find other things that could make it better and more useful for us as well. It's a start. So just some background, I just wanted to share. You all that worked here at that time.
So to be clear, am I the only one that wants that clause removed? Just want to clear that, that up right now.
Yeah. Okay, and, and I would say, based on the input we received, that at least one individual believes it does give us some coverage for risk as a city. So I, 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 I think it, it's, it's, it's neutral. I think it, it gives us some cover. So I, I would, I would keep it in. But again, you know, I grew up with a landline where if I got two rings, that meant it was from my grandma's house. If I got three rings, it was from my house. So, yeah.
I remember party lines.
Yeah, but this guy, this guy does know what he's talking about. So I, I would, I respect Councilman Gears' opinion and, and assessment of the the overall ordinance.
Then let's, then I'll, I'll drop my, my request to remove the clause. Like I said before, it's not a hill we're dying on. The language isn't ideal, but life will go on.
So is anybody entertaining the suggestion from the public about tabling it and waiting to get a little more educated? No?
I am not, because I think it's more important that we get this on the books. This, this amends a code that is, is seriously outdated. It's a party line code that we have on the books now. And we can amend it.
Again.
Again, if we find something is egregious, but I'm gonna not, nothing to knock you, Jeff, but you know, generally lawyers, but I'm gonna trust the, I'm gonna trust the telecommunications lawyer in this one. Since I'm not technical enough, so if you're, if, if this Jeff is okay for the most part with the setback language, then I'm comfortable with.
Yeah, very, it, it's very standard setback language. As the attorney noted, that they didn't write this from scratch, so.
Hey, counsel, I'll be looking for a motion.
And I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number fourteen seventy-seven, series twenty twenty-four, in ordinance of the city council for the city of Woodland Park, Colorado, amending Title V of the Woodland Park Municipal Code regarding wireless communication facility regulations to establish regulations for wireless communication facilities.
Second. Thank you, counsel. Any further discussion? Suzanne?
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries six one.
Thank you, counsel. Item nine D is approval of a festival permit for Vino and Notes. And Suzanne, please.
Thank you. Now on to something fun. And my apologies for the applicants. They've been sitting here a long time waiting. So as counsel knows, I sometimes have to bring these to you, sometimes I don't. This one is a little different for counsel because this is not a special event liquor license. This does not qualify as a special event liquor license because the Vino and Notes, as we knew it in the past, is now a different, a different event organizer. It is no longer a nonprofit. It is a for-profit event. So special event liquor license can only be for nonprofits. We wanted to work with the applicant to make this happen, and so we are doing what's called a festival permit. So this event can happen. And this year, the sponsorship has, sponsorship has changed to Barn and Barrels, which is a for-profit organization. They have changed it to a festival permit, and the festival permit has to be approved by the state and the local licensing authority, which is us. The applicants are with us this evening. It's Tracy and Dan Vinton. And in a moment, they'd love to come up to the podium and tell you about what they're doing this year. But I'd like to just go through the details of the application with you. So the action tonight is for counsel to approve a festival permit for the twenty twenty-four Vino and Notes. The Barn and Barrel LLC, Doing Business, as the twenty twenty-four Vino and Notes, is a for-profit organization with a certificate of good standing from the Secretary of State's office. And the twenty twenty-four Vino and Notes will be held in Memorial Park on Saturday, August third, from eleven AM to five PM. The festival application was submitted to the city on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The festival application was submitted to the state on July first, twenty twenty-four. And the subject property, Memorial Park, was posted on July first, twenty twenty-four, as required by law. The city clerk's office is asking for counsel to approve this festival permit this evening. And again, the applicants are here, and I'd welcome them to come to the podium to tell you about their events.
All right, would the applicants please come up and share with us about your new event? The new old event. Welcome.
Hey, guys, how are you tonight?
Hi there, thank you. I'm Tracy Vinton.
My name's Dan Vinton. We live in Florence.
And, thanks. And we would like to invite all of you to come to Vino and Notes on August the third from eleven to five. In fact, I'm gonna hand some tickets over here.
Thank you so much.
We, we met with Habitat for Humanity. We were, we were asked to meet with them back in October, end of October. They had expressed to us that they wanted to see this event continue on because it was good for the community. My husband and I have both been involved with Habitat, with Vino and Notes, both as on the committee, for the, on the board, on the committee, for Habitat and for Vino, as well as vendors ourselves for over a decade. So this is not something that is new to us. We've been involved with it, obviously, for quite a while. This is the sixteenth annual, by the way. So it is an old event, I would say, just with new ownership. And so one of the reasons that Habitat. And so one of the reasons that Habitat approached us was obviously because they already knew us and we had been involved with it. And fortunately, I did have a beer and wine license. So I was able then to um pull the permit. Actually, he was. It's his name. It's his name that's on it, not me. But um any questions that you might have about it?
Counsel, any questions?
What are, what's the monetary value of the tickets? Then we have to ask that, uh, because we have strict, um.
So it, any, anywhere from twenty-five to sixty dollars. It depends on like a non-drinker. It depends on whether it's pre-purchased or day of event. We honestly did not change the dollar amount from what Habitat had used.
Perfect. I just, we, we just.
It's in line with other wine festivals, too.
Yeah. And, and yes, we're not a nonprofit, but when they called us, they asked us if we would take it over. And so we were like, well, what does takeover actually mean?
Sure.
And so actually, what we did was the proceeds that we gave them went to the bill that they're doing on sixty-seven. And then proceeds of the day of the event, we've got a percentage that we're also gonna give because they still need some landscaping done. And actually, it's, the HOA at that time, I think, had like six hundred dollars in their account. So we asked them if our money could go to the HOA because that's owned, you know, by the, by the homeowners there. And so that's what, what's happening. So we're still kind of doing that. We're thinking about what we'd like to do in the future is pick up, pick a nonprofit and then still have proceeds go to that. Uh, so that's our plan with, with the event.
No, appreciate the context. Thank you.
Is that all? All right. Thank you and good luck. I'll be there. It'll be fun. It's great. It's a great event.
It's only two weeks away. I'm really nervous.
You'll be fine. Thank you. Mayor, uh, Case, I had a question though for um the city manager. Are, is the city going to offer an in-kind service package for this event, or are they, they're on their own?
I, I believe that we're covering everything the way that we normally would.
Okay.
Yes, so.
Thank you.
Security, traffic control. Ben, is that correct on the traffic control? It's all?
Uh, sorry, for the Vino and Notes project?
Yes.
Uh, I haven't s- I, I'll need to look further into the traffic.
I, I, I as, I assume it's the same.
It would be one.
We have an answer coming.
Trust me, I just wrote the check this week. Um, I did pay for the traffic control.
Okay. Thank you.
Six hundred and eight dollars, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes, so that would be one of our standard à la carte traffic control packages for the event.
Thank you. Anything else? I'd look for a motion then. Um, then I'll make a motion to approve or the approval of a festival permit for Vino and Notes.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I did not ask for public comments. Is there anyone?
There is not.
Okay. Thank you. I'm lucky. All right. Anything further? Suzanne?
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Mackay?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Good luck.
Counsel, we're gonna, you bet. Good luck. Have fun. Counsel, we're gonna take ten A and then take a break. We get, give these folks out of here because they've been very patient with us. Uh, ten A and new business is approve a rock and gem, gem and jewelry show T U P, temporary use permit. A request from Kim Pacman, the applicant, Pete Labarre, David Banker, and Kevin Maddox, property owners, for an onsite vendor camping, August twelfth through the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, for the Woodland Park Rock Gem and Jewelry Show Special Event at one nine two five zero East US Highway twenty-four in the Service Commercial Zone District. And Karen? There you are. Yeah, ready to go.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm here to also talk about a longstanding event in our community. This would be the fourteenth year uh for this uh rock gem and jewelry show here in Woodland Park. And temporary use permits are typically processed at an administrative level, so it happens with staff. City council never sees them, um, with the exception of a couple of things. One, if somebody wants to or has an event that's going to run longer or outside uh more traditional hours. Um, and then, or, and sometimes when that is granted by city council, if there's no issues and it's a recurring event in subsequent years, we have the ability to approve that administratively, so long as there's no other issues associated with it. This one's a little bit different because it's the camping component. That's actually covered by a separate section of our code, section eight point one two. And that doesn't have that administrative um delegation to it. So that's why you see us here on an annual basis in front of you. So um the location for this is uh the old Saddle Club property across from the toll, toll road intersection with Highway twenty-four. Um, their dates for the event would be uh Monday, August twelfth through Monday, August nineteenth. Those are the dates for the camping that they're wanting to do. The actual jewelry show um happens within that. And this would start, um, they would start showing up at nine AM on that Monday, August twelfth and would be all wrapped up and out of there by nine PM on Monday, August nineteenth. Um, so this does include um uh self-contained camping units. It's in this designated area. And um the camping is limited to show vendors and event volunteers only. Um, the camp spaces are within the designated vendor spaces, so this provides maximum merchandise security and vendor convenience for the, the folks that are there at, running the show. Uh, so what you have in front of you then is a recommendation that um you approve the camping at the Ute Pass Saddle Club grounds uh in conjunction with the Woodland Park Rock Gem and Jewelry Show Special Event, subject to a list of ten conditions. Uh, so camping shall occur only between nine AM uh August twelfth through nine PM, August nineteenth. Camping shall be for event volunteers and vendors only, with no more than forty-five camping units permitted onsite at any given time. Three, camping units shall be, shall include tents, camper trailers, recreational vehicles, and pickup campers. Four, camping units shall not be connected to city water or sewer and shall be self-contained. Five, on and off-site trash, garbage, or debris shall be cleaned up during and upon cessation of camping. On-site cleanup shall be coordinated and enforced by the property owner and event coordinator. Six, the event coordinator shall be responsive to complaints received, if any. Seven, all lighting for the camping and event areas, if any, shall be downcast, fully shielded, and turned off by nine PM each night. Eight, all generators, if any, shall be turned off by nine PM. Nine, the event coordinator and all campers shall at all times be subject to Municipal Code Section nine point four one noise. And the final condition, number ten, at no time shall campers, vendors, event volunteers, or guests slash participants obstruct access to the City of Woodland Park lift station, since that's immediately adjacent to where this is happening. So any questions for me? And then I believe we have the applicant present, maybe? Yes. Fabulous. Grant on our teams dealing with them directly, so I typically haven't seen them. Um, but any questions for me?
Counsel, Jeff, go ahead.
Forgive my ignorance, but uh the conditions you listed, who's responsible for enforcing that nine PM cutoff?
The applicant. Typically, if there's a complaint, it's um typically fielded through dispatch and uh the, the police department is uh who ends up showing up.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
But there's never been a complaint in the years that the, this uh festival's been um.
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I am either. Um, but it does set a model for future um festivals that might include camping, and I think it's a, a good model for us to keep in mind. I know there's, there is at least one promoter that would like to, to have an event where we would have overnight camping. And this is an example of the fact that right now, we do not permit overnight camping within the city limits, except by this permit process.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Is there anyone in the public that would like to talk to the counsel about this item? All right. I would look for a motion, counsel.
And make a mo, a motion for the approval of uh the approval of a rock and gem jewelry show T U P um as written.
Good job. Thank you.
Second?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Mackay?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Counsel, can we take a break till it's five minutes long enough? Or ten? Nine twenty.
We're gonna call this meeting back to order. It's now nine twenty. And we have a restless council. So we're gonna move on to ten B. Approval of resolution nine twenty four series twenty twenty four. A resolution adopting Bob's rules of order as council per- rules of procedure. Jeff.
Good evening, counsel. I've sent you a memo concerning this topic. Suggested you look through the appendix of Bob's rules of order. As I mentioned in the memo, this would displace Robert's rules of order as our backstop. Uh, Roberts has eight hundred pages and ninety six motions and nobody knows what's in there. You know, so what's developed our Bob's rules of order. Just as in the practical to as an alternative is a practical reality. And this is the Bob's is the codification of those. The good news on this council is we don't spend a lot of time worrying about motions and procedure. It's pretty straightforward. And I love that because the councils that fight are the ones that use their rules all the time and it's just a pain. Um, so uh, the your predecessor council heard a presentation from Bob Widener, the author of Bob's Rules of Order. They were very close to adopting the rules, but uh, deferred to their successors to consider doing that. So. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions, attorney?
Uh, no, just ask uh, Jeff to um. Emphasize the fact that Bob's rules of order are um. Created to comply with Colorado state statute, which I think is is very relevant. Will not um, conflict with state statute.
That's true, and nor will it displace the rules in our council rules of procedure, which are fairly extensive already. So.
They just complement them.
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel?
Well, I kind of like the Bob's rule better than the Roberts. They just had a situation and I tried going through Roberts and it's hard to understand. I go to the Bob's and it's in layman's terms pretty much. So, you know, I really, really liked it. So.
Good.
Yeah.
Glad you liked it. Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution. I'm on the right one. Okay. Number nine twenty four, series twenty twenty four, resolution adopting Bob's rule of order as council rules. Procedure is written.
I second.
Thank you, counsel. Was there anyone in the audience who would like to talk to us about Roberts or Bob's rules? I keep forgetting that important component. Thank you. Seeing no one will proceed. Any further discussion, counsel? Suzanne.
Smith.
Yes.
Case.
Yes.
Nakai.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Gear.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Now we'll go to ten C. Approval of resolution number nine twenty three, series twenty twenty four. A resolution adopting the twenty twenty four revised council rules of procedure. That was just mentioned.
Hello again, counsel. Um, I've distributed to you the red line of the uh. Of the changes proposed at our council retreat and I uh, I did hear back from council member Nakai that I missed one of them. And that is it. Uh, section six, sub E, page ten. You know, this is where the consent agenda is described and one of the things y'all agreed on was that we would show new legislation under new bills. Instead of the consent calendar. So on page ten, I deleted the sentence that says we the new legislation is is listed on the consent calendar. Now you're happy, right, Catherine? Okay?
Yes, because it goes back to eight A, correct?
That's right.
I am happy.
And then the other thing I did consistent with what you just voted for is in section two. I took out all the references to Roberts and put Bob's in there. Yeah.
You're so quick.
Heck, yeah. Um, that's my report on this one.
Counsel, any questions? All right, I'd look for, oh. Any public comment? On this item. Seeing none, look for a motion, counsel.
Actually, before we do that, Jeff, Jeff, just for the public, can you give them a really quick red line? Update or was is it that difficult? I mean, we didn't do that much, right?
Yeah, I. I'll try to do that. Uh, we did not do much. We uh, provided that the rules would be reviewed in June instead of January. Uh, we uh, changed the seating arrangement up here to alphabetical. Uh, I believe started going that direction. Uh, see, it was really momentous amendments to these rules of procedure. We have provided that uh. Public comment was optional uh, in work sessions. We added some discretion for the presiding officer to entertain public comments on first reading. We clarified that the mayor or any two council members um. May request a uh. A bill. Uh, let's see, we got rid of the provision that uh, there there'd be a meeting eight days before the council meeting. Uh, that's never happened since I've been here.
Never happened since I've been here.
Uh, let's see. We clarified that in issuing sanctions under the rules of procedure, a two thirds vote. Uh, was required in order to impose sanctions or moving it inconsistency. Where in one case it was provided that a majority would uh, be required for those sanctions. Um, I'm sure I've forgotten something like that illustrates.
Do we have any teachers in the audience? Because this is like a teacher asking a question at the end of a. Staff meeting. That extends the staff meeting.
Sorry. All right. I think, oh, well, plus the eight A. I think we're good. Thank you, Jeff.
Bet you.
In that case. I will make a motion approved to approve resolution number nine twenty three. Uh, series twenty twenty four, resolution adopting the twenty twenty four revised council rules of procedure.
Thank you. Any further discussion, counsel? Suzanne.
Case.
Yes.
Nakai.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Gear.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
And now we have ten D. Last but not least, thank you for staying, Ben. Security improvements and park and recreation door contract between. Fortis General Contracting and the city of Woodland Park in the amount of one hundred twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety eight dollars. Ben Schmidt.
So these are minor security improvement updates and uh, building layout changes to city hall. Uh, but mostly what the public is going to notice that's different is going to be a vestibule in the front entrance area. There's going to be an ADA accessible ramp up to the dais and there's going to be a wall right there with the door. And then for the Parks and Rec staff, there is going to be a break in that firewall there with a wall to service the multi. Purpose room so that folks don't have to walk all the way around. Um, but if you have any more details on the specifics, I'd be happy to uh, address them in executive session.
Thank you. Counsel, the details of the security improvements won't be released to the public for obvious reasons. So if you want further information, we could adjourn to executive session. All right, seeing no one really wanting to do that. I would ask if there's any public comment on this item. Seeing none. I would look to the council for further discussion or a motion.
I'm just gonna jump in. I make a motion to approve the security improvements and park and recreation door contract between Fortis General Contracting and the city of Woodland Park in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety eight dollars.
I'll second. Thank you, counsel. Any further discussion? Suzanne.
Nakai.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Gear.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Case.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. That's all the business we have tonight. So that moves us on to reports. Mayor's report I'm going to share. Only three events, which is interesting. Um, for July, the remainder of July, we have the community partnership happy hour, four to six P M. At over ice on July nineteenth. Over ice is in the country lodge. July twenty fifth, Smarty Pints Trivia Night, six to eight P M. At the Upass Cultural Center. And on July twenty ninth, the Woodland Park Wind Symphony Jazz at three. Upass Cultural Center Pavilion, three P M. With the Swing Factory. And at four P M. Dot Zero, and I don't know if you guys remember Dot Zero. But in their day, they were. Pretty popular and they're very good. So I would encourage you all to enjoy our local music and Dot Zero. On the twenty ninth of July. That's all I have. Council reports.
I have nothing.
Now, Catherine.
Terry.
So first I wanted to shout out the um, maintenance, the guy, the guys that take care of my memorial park because it looked beautiful on the fourth of July. And Maria with Parks and Rec, I guess, came up with the idea to do the sandbox on the creek and the kids loved it. Um, also Stephanie Keys, the county clerk needs election workers. It's paid. She will train you. She needs election workers of all parties and and unaffiliated. Anybody want her number? No?
Yes.
Okay. And then you do?
She does.
All right, seven, one, nine, six, eight, nine, two, nine, five, one. And you get paid too.
And this way you learn for then our our election.
And then the other thing I wanted to report was that I met or with the uh. Property manager at Safeway uh, for the Safeway lot. Um, and they started a conversation a year ago to get the dang thing repaired. And finally, it's going to be done in mid-August. Um, Safeway is going to do their part first and then. Uh, Thrive, which is which is the management company, will will repair the broken curbs on the islands. And then also heard back from Walmart today that they have fixed numerous potholes. But still have many to complete and they have a work order to have them repaired. And they are I have also submitted to have the entire parking lot paved. So, isn't that great?
I don't know. I was kind of enjoying Safeway though with my truck.
The one, the one at Walmart, if one of those five wheel or the fifth wheel thing goes through there and hits it, it's I swear it's two feet deep.
Oh, geez.
One of them, yeah.
All right.
Thank you. Jeff?
All right, um, as noted at the beginning of the meeting, uh, July is Parks and Recreation Month. Um, Parks and Rec Advisory Board met on July tenth and we actually even had a member of the general public come by and observe our meeting. And participate in the public comment section, which apparently is pretty rare and unusual. So. By all means, I mean, if anyone wants to come and attend any of our meetings, uh, we encourage you to do so. Uh, Meadowwood Sports Complex Master Plan Comment Period ends on Friday, July nineteenth at midnight. Please visit whatsupwoodlandpark.com to view the plan and provide comments. You'll see comments from me on there as I have done that already. Uh, youth soccer registration, uh, our registrations are accepted through July nineteenth. Youth flag football registrations are being accepted through July twenty sixth. And as so far as Avenger open space, the donations are now at sixty two thousand dollars. A donor recognition plan has been developed and the four levels are as follows. One hundred to nine hundred and ninety nine bronze, one thousand to four thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine silver. Five thousand to nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety nine gold and the diamond level is ten thousand and up. And that is all.
Thank you, sir. Carol?
Um, yes, I got two reports. Uh, in my role as a military liaison, I need to correct my report from a last council meeting. I failed to uh. Credit our our local Chamber of Commerce President Deb Miller for uh, making an introduction for me with the. Colorado Springs Chamber of Commerce Military Affairs Committee. Because of her introduction, I was able to participate in a uh, teleconference this week uh, with the subcommittee of of the Military Affairs Committee or the MAC. And uh, on that uh, Zoom call were uh, members of all of the communications officers at all of the bases talking about the events. Up through uh, Christmas or the holiday season uh, that will involve uh, veterans, uh, not only the veterans, but also uh, participation of all of the military bands in the area. Um, that's only relevant relevant if any of us wanted to have an event here in Woodland Park that in involved one of the bands. Uh, but I did use the opportunity for those on the Zoom call to let them know about the upcoming Veterans Rally. Um, that's the sixteenth and seventeenth of August. Um, I think we already, most of us already knew that date. Um, and surprisingly, some in that particular uh, Zoom called it, were not aware of the rally. Um, so I was glad to be able to get that uh, information out there. Uh, from Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. Let's go back to the twenty ninth of June when we had the city, uh, twenty second citywide cleanup day. I've got some unofficial numbers for that and we have lovely photos from uh, the day, some of the photos. Uh, we think uh, because we haven't formalized the numbers which have to be submitted to the Keep America Beautiful. Uh, organization in order for us to be an affiliate of that org, uh, that group. Uh, we believe there were about a hundred volunteers that showed up. Uh, including uh, City Manager Vassalotti and his kids and Councilman Jones. Um, there were not as many individual picker-uppers at this one uh, that registered in advance, but some did show up the day of the event. But uh, we're particularly grateful for Victory Life Church, Caris Bible College, Freedom Church, the Teller Business Builders. And Teller Trails. Teller Trails went out and started um. Uh, picking up debris on in the Avenger um, uh, open space and surprisingly, there's a lot of glass up there. So they took uh, buckets in order to pick up glass. So we believe we had, we definitely had two commercial uh, dumpsters. Uh, to fill and included in those two commercial dumpsters was one tire and one dead animal. Um, but uh, in addition to the the great volunteers that came out that day, we also wanted to uh, recognize our commercial spot sponsors. Waste Management Divide and Woodland Park Hauling, Natural Grocers was showed up with uh, fresh fruit and all kinds of um, swag. Cafe Leo and the Java House and AJ's Amer- American Pizzeria, who uh, provided uh, pizzas for all of the participants. And a special shout out to Zeb's Outfitter and the Gear Lab because their marquee recognized our volunteers and tickled them to death. They were really pleased with that. And that's all I have.
It's a nice.
Fantastic. That was a great event, by the way.
Great picture.
It was a lot of fun.
Thank you, Carol. George?
Yeah, uh, DDA met um, July second. Uh, and we appointed new. We have basically new officers. Uh, as I mentioned in June, we were gonna do. So John Gamilke is now the president. Eric Cabrera is the vice. Alborn is uh, continues on as secretary and Tony Perry is has uh, taken on the treasurer role. For the remainder of this uh, next year here. Um, Aaron, I will leave Tava up to you uh, because you're more up to date. So when you, if you want to do that one. We did uh, take a look at a multi-tenant sign concept for Woodland Station. I think we're gonna do some work sessions around that. And uh, Ben did a great job um, actually addressing uh. President Kamelki's list of concerns, um, things that that uh, John had brought up. Um, and the it and I know they're very preliminary, so I don't really want to get into them yet. But I do think um, Ben did a presentation on the medians and I think that would be, as that progresses, that would be a great thing to do. Um, you know, at council one night. So. So anyway, so it's very productive. Uh, the new staff or new officers are installed and everybody's clicking along.
Thank you.
George? Would you all consider that for say the city market? Um, shopping center as well? The multi-tenant sign?
Hmm, that's private property.
Is it in the DDA overlay?
Uh, I don't know that City Market is. No, no, I was said Aaron's gonna do Tava. The multi-tenant sign concept, I'm sorry, I didn't say this is for Woodland Station. So it's. Yeah, okay, so it's the public portion. So I don't think we would. So I don't think we would, I don't think we would address a. I don't know, an entity like that, but maybe we would. Maybe we could. I don't know. I could bring it up, see what.
I I did attend that meeting as well and you did talk about um, micro grants for some of the businesses. I mean, that might.
Yeah, we.
Option for as a micro grant.
It's a good point. Yeah, the the great, the micro. Yeah, that's true. And it, it, okay. Cool. That's it.
Thank you, George. Smitty, do you have something to share?
I gotta laugh this out tonight.
Okay, thank you. So the attorney?
I'm going on vacation as soon as this meeting's over. That's my update.
You drive safe.
Thank you. Yeah.
Aaron?
Thank you. Um, on Tava, we are still anticipating bringing that SDA to council on August first. We are working closely with them. And have made a lot of progress. So I'm hopeful that August first, you will see the SDA in front of you. Um, and then I do have.
That is a subdivision development agreement.
Sorry about that. And then I do have a a sales tax update for the month of May. All right, huh, can't see my own screen here. There we go. Okay, so. It looks like we are getting back on track in terms of our revenue for the year. I've actually seen a number of other cities reporting on the CML distribution I'm on that are saying that revenues are down across the state. So we are very fortunate. Our revenues are looking good right now. Month. Uh, month versus, I'm sorry, May two thousand twenty-four versus two thousand twenty-three, we were up three percent, which is right on the budget number. So we were up nineteen thousand, six fifty-five over last year. Uh, year to date, we are up two point three percent, which is seventy thousand dollars uh, more than we collected the year before. Lodging tax is following right in the same line. Uh, we're down ten percent for the month of May and thirteen point four percent for year to date. So we're looking pretty good right now, uh, where I'd like to be. So.
Uh, the. Aaron, on the lodging tax, can you attribute any of that to uh, declining S T R lodging tax remission?
I think we had a couple or a few of the larger S T R properties that are that are no longer operating. And then it seems like it's flatlined aside from that because it's been pretty consistent month to month.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, and then if you if you look uh, year to date, the teal colored. I tried changing it from that light gray. So the teal colored now, which Dolphins colors, you're welcome. Uh, it's a little bit, you can see that it's up every month over last year, except March, when we had the snowstorm. And that's it for me, unless you have any questions.
Thank you. And we had a discussion earlier and because we're all anxious to get out of here at this point of the evening. Aaron's going to start doing her, his sales tax reports during ceremonies and presentations. So that it's fresh, we're fresh and we can appreciate it a little more. So and so can the can the community. So.
But thank you for changing the color. At least I can see it now.
You're very welcome.
Terry, did you have something to go back?
I did, Ben. Any update on the? The 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 truck rollover? Thing?
Uh, so I've sent multiple requests to the cleanup crew to submit their flood hazard development permits. I've got substantial documentation. I've met with their engineer multiple times over the last year and they still have not. Submitted anything to us. So. I will uh, see if we can talk to area, Aaron, and maybe the attorneys about what our next steps are in that process.
I'm sorry, I was having an off, a sidebar with the attorney. Um, anything else, counsel? Aaron, does anyone else have anything that in staff?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Then. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Hey, Ben. I'll get this signed. I'll give it right to you.